None of the mics are working, and I'm not about to scream all night or ask you to do the same. So we're gonna see if we can do something about that.
Yeah, work.
Hello, everybody. All right, I think we'll start this meeting. And we'll all try to keep the mics as close to our mouths as possible, because that allows you here and the people remotely here. Actually, now we're learning how to do this. I'm gonna call and order the planning board meeting of July 6, 2022 by calling Roll first. Alden Clark.
Here.
Beth DeLeo.
Here.
Bob Cow.
Here.
Jamie Pennington.
Here.
Heather Rogers.
Here.
Rick Tainter.
Here.
Richard Yeager is out with COVID. Don Walters.
Yes.
Bonnie Sontag here. We also have Andy Port, Director of Planning Development, Linda Guthrie on Nuttaker, and Attorney Tom Lang from AP Law. We go through the agenda. We have a public hearing on 344 Merrimack Street, 6C special permit. It is basically just to review a few details in the decision, and then it will take a vote on it. So that won't take very long. The second public hearing is the Institution for Savings, special permit and site plan review, continued from 6:22. Under general business, we have short-term rental review from planning board recommendations that we will be sending on to the city council. We have one letter under correspondence to recognize an approval of minutes for May 18, and then other updates. Before we get started with the first public hearing, I'd like Director Port to give us a few words about the technology and how we're using it tonight and going forward.
Thank you, Chair. Can you all hear me? Okay, sorry. So that's actually the point for these comments here, and I appreciate the chair giving a moment. We've had a lot of inquiry from folks about attendance in person, and obviously, the board's here, is back in person from the pandemic. The Tony Ford Appeals is doing the same. The city council has been meeting in the council chambers at City Hall. We are meeting here at the Senior Center. There's double bookings that could be a problem. So we have different locations that we meet in. We are working with the administration, the planning office is working with the administration and others to get better equipment in the space, and that's primarily because, well, we have the so-called owl cameras to provide a connection for those at home, those in the rooms. We want to make sure that the audio is very clear, so everybody can hear what's happening, you know, who said what, and visuals and whatnot. So we are able to do that right now, and we're hoping that everybody can communicate quite clearly at home and here in the room. And that's part of the reason why we're amplifying voices with the microphones. So if you're speaking, if you could get very close to the mic, I think that would work a little better. But if you're using the wireless, maybe just begin or that way the folks at home can hear what you're saying as well. So with that, I'm happy to elaborate on this, but just to let you know, we are working to put even better equipment in these rooms that is built in and has better reception. And one of the things we are trying to do is to maintain the remote access that we've gained during the pandemic so that public participation becomes easier for folks not to come to the City Hall or the Senior Center at a quick four hours for a public hearing. So or, you know, may have a disability or otherwise. So it's beneficial, we found, to applicants, to the general public, to butters, everybody, to be able to do that. So our plan is to try to maintain that as best we can using the facilities that we have.
First public hearing is the 344 Merrimack Street, 6C special permit. Is there anyone here representing the applicant? So as you know, we've gone through all of the details of the decision before, and we're just waiting to get confirmation from the Uwekoy Historical Commission that they have accepted the draft preservation restriction on the existing structure. In the decision, the only thing that I know has changed is adding the date of June 23rd, where relevant, for the historical commission acceptance of that draft preservation restriction. We've got access three places. But there's nothing else that's changed. Has anybody else reviewed it about anything else that needs to be corrected or added? So we're ready to take the motion to approve this 6C special application for 344 Merrimack Street? If so, I'll take the motion.
Take the motion.
Okay, Rick, and second please.
I'll second.
Alden, thank you, and I'll call Roll. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie? Yes. You're good to go. Thank you for your patience, and we appreciate you coming back again for the decision. Okay, that's done. We will move on to the Institution for Savings, special permit for downtown Hotherley District, and company site plan review application. Let me open it up to the applicant for an update on information that we requested.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board. Hopefully, everybody in attendance can hear me with the microphone, and I'll try and keep my voice elevated. I'm Adam Costa, I'm with the firm of B. Calabrian and Costa. My partner, Lisa B., is here with me as well, the state representative of the Institution for Savings. I was present, as was Attorney B., at your first meeting, when you opened the public hearing on remand from the Land Court following a multi-session mediation involving representatives of the institution and representatives of the city. We continued that public hearing to your June 22 meeting, but you had these two members who were absent from that meeting, and so the applicant saw a continuance. I understand that you have eight of your nine members this evening, so still not an ideal situation, given the importance of the matter, but we understand that there is a need to try and keep the process moving forward, and so we're looking forward to that continuance. We presented to you at the opening of the public hearing back on June 1st the commitments that had been made by the Institution for Savings, through the mediation process, and these commitments that comprise the substance of our application back to the planning board agreement. And there were five topics and solo that I addressed during that initial session of the public hearing, and there was much discussion that occurred not only amongst members of the public through the common period, but also among board members concerning those various topics and some questions that existing board members, maybe to a greater extent newer board members, had those who weren't present during the initial original proceedings before the board on the institution's project. So we submitted a follow-up letter on June 13, 2022, a brief letter about a page and a half that addressed really three topics that had been topics of discussion as the June 1st meeting. The first one relates to the first floor windows. I hope that all of you have read or already had the correspondence before you hear this June 13 letter. The first topic is identified on page one. First floor windows and the type of glass to be used, and it's the fact of the appearance of the building. And what was explained to the board back on June 1st is that there had been significant discussion, not only during the original public hearing process, but also during the two mediation sessions concerning the type of glass that we utilized to ensure that there would be no light or wood layer or still to affect neighboring residential properties in particular. And the commitment that had been made as part of your mediation process is that the use of glass would be what's called spandrel glass. Christopher Angelakis, the project architect, is here with us this evening, and can certainly elaborate on what that is, although I think it was discussed with sufficient enough detail back on June 1st that you all understand what it is. There was further requests or comments or questions from a couple of members concerning whether there was any ability to do something slightly different from the spandrel glass, at least on the facade of the building facing Prospect Street. So we proposed here, and it's only for your consideration, if you're comfortable with spandrel glass, that's a commitment that we've made, but we have proposed with respect to the Prospect Street facade. I'm just gonna read the potential condition that we spelled out. Taking into consideration the impacts of light and acoustical emission from the first floor of the Prospect Street in our place, the applicant will design and install a shadow box design to the maximum depth possible in light of sight constraints. The windows on the rear of the Garden Street side of the structure would remain the spandrel glass as we previously committed. So this is a proposal. I didn't see in the draft decision that was prepared by staff in advance of the meeting that this particular potential condition, I didn't find its way into that draft. I suspect that your staff wasn't sure whether it was something that was of any interest to the board as a whole. It was, again, only a couple of members that had raised this concern or question, but we wanted to give you an additional option. And again, if you have additional questions as to what that might mean, Mr. Angelakis can address that for you.
Yeah, let's stop it. Let's continue with that topic for now.
Sure.
Are there any additions or comments to that condition or what Attorney Costa has presented? Yeah, Bob?
I think it is important that it be approved as a condition. I would be interested if there could be a description of what the architects are thinking about.
Sure, Madam Chair, happy to have Christopher speak to that.
Yeah.
Can you restate your question?
Just interested in what you were thinking about relative to the shadow box.
Shadow box.
Well, so it's gonna have to do with how the window systems get detailed. In the house, not done with being able to get maybe three inches of clearance with either back, either metal panel that behind the metal panel that has insulation and has the back structure. And so what you're seeing is a painted surface behind fully transparent glass. So the glass, three inches of airspace and some painted surface, three or so inches. I think that's probably doable. We have to work out the details right now, you know, to have a window type, a window system specified. So it's gonna have to do with whatever, specific window types that come into here. I think that's why the language that are reset is at the maximum depth possible for it. So I think it's very important. I agree with you, probably a better detail for the lower floors. I would say it's the Prospect Street and the Odo Street side that would probably be the appropriate for that, whereas the Garden Street side, I think we would ask to say, you know, it's kind of not so appropriate.
I think, I guess, one, just one last detail. I assume that.
Sorry.
Can you try to?
This is the end.
Try and use the mic.
Yeah. If folks could just be clearly in the microphones, it'll help with the folks at home. Thank you. I think, yeah, you have to be a little closer, sorry, just to put it to work. Thank you.
As you look at that detail, I assume you'll also be looking at color for the metal panel behind the glass.
Yeah, as in general, I think your project taking this spandrel glass is so that it looks uniform in the daytime, all the other glass, which would tend to make that back panel darker, because glass goes black in the daytime.
Thank you.
Any other questions about this particular issue? Can I just give clarification on the condition that you posed? Does that specify Prospect and Odo Street?
It is for the first floor, Prospect and Odo Street is the way that the condition is spread. Again, it was our condition. We don't want to take ownership of the board's decision. If you see that to proceed with approval, you can obviously modify the language, but that is what we proposed in our correspondence.
Was there any problem taken there with those conditions?
No, actually, the reason the opposite included, I think it was Mr. Huber had raised a question earlier in the meeting about that detail, because he might have some expertise or experience with that, but to give a detail the opposite, not, we thought it might be helpful if the board members could review that and decide whether that was adequate or whether not, some other verbiage might be a bit to capture.
I think the language is fine. Okay, folks, thank you.
Okay, the reason I'm asking is that any condition that we agree, we want to know that the language is good and will be incorporated into the decision, but we need to vote on each condition as they come up. And so I wanted to make sure that this was the way we wanted to state it. So at this point, I take a motion to incorporate this condition into the final decision. Bob takes that. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Jamie? And, sorry, guys, I have to go through the vocal again. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. So that will be next.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. So the second topic we addressed, and we had a maybe a linkier discussion on this particular topic back at the June 1st meeting, is the issue of vehicle queuing, and specifically queuing in connection with the staggered parking that we proposed as part of the project. You recall, when I gave background, and I held this view, we were on the board a year and a half or two years ago, were familiar with the process that was undertaken, where initially the vehicle parking was off-site. We moved the vehicle parking on-site, and the mechanism we utilized in order to achieve that outcome was we incorporated this concept of stacked parking. A couple of members, I think a member in particular raised questions about whether it was possible for vehicles to queue in such a way that they would not interfere with traffic on the adjacent roadway, specifically on the adjacent Prospect Streets. And so what I indicated at the last meeting is still two things. Number one, that we had had a traffic study done that acknowledged or addressed the issue generally of traffic generated by the project, that the number of vehicle trips that would be, by which the project would be increased as a consequence of the condition. But also that we would take a closer look at trying to present some sort of information. What we ultimately did was a graphic with a system, where you can see here the graphic that we produced showing that in the event, and we're careful in what we say, because it's been indicated to us through the discussions we have with our experts, that there should really not be any circumstance where there is vehicle queuing. It's certainly not easy, sort of significant vehicle queuing you see here with five vehicles waiting with a sixth vehicle about to enter a parking area. The reason for that, and I explain it here in the correspondence, is that city lift representatives have testified at previous meetings of this board that it takes approximately 33 seconds to retrieve a car once the vehicle is called. The individuals who are employed at the Institution for Savings facility will have key fobs that will provide them with quick access to the facility. Additionally, and importantly, there, you can see here that in the event that there were to be vehicle queuing, there is sufficient space on-site for that queuing to occur without the queuing to do one of two things, either back up on the Prospect Street or to interfere with on-site circulation. It's important specifically in the morning to know that there are a number of different shifts that are staggered. And so I had said here in the correspondence that shifts generally arrive between 7:00 AM and 9:00 AM, and the shifts typically depart between 4:00 PM and 6:00 PM. So that's important, because you're not gonna have everybody arriving at the same time, everybody partying at the same time. But even in the circumstance where you had a number of vehicles who might be arriving simultaneously, there would be sufficient space, even if it happens to be at the later part of that morning window from 7:00 to 9:00, when maybe you have some activity, other activity at the bank. You have a situation, as you can see here in the graphic, where those vehicles can queue on-site, and if you notice, there are a couple lanes. There's a lane to provide queuing, but there's also a second lane that's around that aisle. So there is no circumstance where those vehicles are going to repeat access over to the outdoor parking spaces that are on-site. So that's the purpose of this graphic that we prepared. We attached to our June 13 correspondence a copy of Ron Mueller Associates' May 13, 2020 Traffic Analysis, which was several pages, and had a number of charts from the Institute of Traffic and Transportation Engineers Manual, citing to location, type of use, et cetera, and concluded generally that because of the nature of the use, because of the size of the addition, because of the representations in terms of uses of that addition, not necessarily providing additional services beyond what the bank already provides, but to accommodate existing services, it's not a circumstance where you're doubling or tripling, let's say, the size of a restaurant by adding tables, by adding seats, and therefore by attracting a greater clientele. We're still dealing with approximately the same number of employees. So I think the goal of the term here is that we might be dealing with maybe one additional, two additional vehicle trips. And the conclusion reached by Ron Mueller was that it was negligible within the daily fluctuation of traffic and not expected to have an operational impact on the surrounding streets. So you have that additional information now, or at least we rehashed some of what we presented previously. But I'll take a breath and see if there are any questions on that topic.
Have any questions? Come on.
Okay, the last topic we addressed in the June 13 letter was a request that, again, we devoted some time to at the June 1 meeting, which is the materials that would be used. We spent a lot of time discussing the aesthetic of the addition. We spent a fair amount of time discussing what was reviewed through the mediation process in terms of aesthetic, as compared to the existing building, what can be done in terms of design and penetration to avoid appearance of height or massing. And there were questions concerning, well, what are the specific materials that are going to be used in this particular location or that particular location on the building? And I don't want to speak for Christopher, but I'm sure that he'll agree that what was essentially stated was that we're not at that stage in the design necessarily, where we have all those spine features. We don't have item numbers or manufacturers. But what was requested of us is that we try and put together it best we can based upon the commitments we've made and what we know so far in preparing the renderings and architectural designs that we presented to the board, put together a general classification of the materials that will be used. And so we provided to you as an attachment to my correspondence, you know, it's a one-page document, something that is entitled Classification of Materials to be Used. And it addresses everything from curving and baseboards, water joints, windows, cornices and roof valley flashing and ridge tapping, connector fascia, mechanical lube or garage doors, with some degree of detail. What I will say, and I don't want to steal Mr. Port's thunder, and he will address it, I'm sure, when he speaks to the decision that he drafted, but there is a condition I invoke the proposed special permit and the proposed site plan approval that acknowledges the fact, as is often the case with these sorts of projects, that there is finer design to occur as the process unfolds, as the development process unfolds, and to be a close reconstruction. And there's a provision that indicates that there will be an opportunity for that information to be submitted and reviewed at the staff level to verify that it is generally consistent with the representations we've made and the information we've presented in this additional attachment. And if there is any question, anything that goes beyond four corners of what we committed to or that staff is uncomfortable with, then they would refer back to the board for the board to act on, want to request to modify the decision. But otherwise, there wouldn't be some check or balance at the staff level to make sure they won't represent the use consistent with what we promised to provide as part of this primary process.
I don't know if this is a question for you or for Andy. One of the listing plans and documents, there was a to-be-determined cornice and fascia and connector copper panel option number.
Yes, we understood the board had in the last meeting conclusively decided which of those options had preferred, so if there was a determination of that, we're putting that in there. The bank had proposed the three options.
And the architect will make it a standing seam or we can make a different decision at the time of the mock-up when we review that. But I have this on now that Attorney Costa is going to turn to June 15. I just want to make sure that you have the right information placed in this part of the decision. I want to leave anything down there.
And Madam Chair, your regulation is correct. Mr. Port just had on the screen, has again on the screen option one, two, and three that we presented previously. So we did represent in our, in our June 13 letter that the applicant is willing to make the connector a standing seam, and that was the general sense that we got from the board from the June 1st meeting, but we were not certain of that. I'm not sure staff was certain of it, hence the blank in the decision.
Good, so does anyone want to comment on this? And go ahead and kind of, for us? Specific knowledge of copper cornices, want to speak up?
Well, I think I mentioned standing seam.
Please speak into your microphone, make sure it's on. Press it R.
Testing, can you hear me?
Yes.
So I think I said standing seam. I don't know if anyone else even spoke, but I would stay by that as my preference.
I didn't, I didn't.
Okay. We're just going standing seam.
Sorry, could you, could we speak to the option number, or is that? Sorry, I don't recall. I think it was three, but I don't.
If you just make a note, standing seam, we have the option, say, on the document.
So we're talking about the copper?
Yes, copper.
Right, so.
I think it's three.
Three.
Oh, I don't know. No, maybe there's a fourth, I don't.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's four. Okay, so we're on four. Yeah, so I might be able to clarify. I don't think it's a three. So raised seams is the fourth option. So we show where we think those seams will be, which are sort of coming from the geometry of the windows, standing up the tiers. That seam, that seam for anybody usually stands off the face of the copper about inch and a half.
All right, and there is Attorney Costa commented with fifth special condition that she will hear when we review the decision is to remove the materials by later date. Remember from the planning department and bring them back to us for bearing considerations. It's not what we want to bring in. Does that conclude your information for tonight?
So it does, my understanding, Madam Chair, is it?
Excuse me, just a moment.
I have one last question on.
Make sure your mic's working.
About windows. If I read the text of the listed materials, it says the windows are aluminum clad, double-pane wood windows, and snap in volume drift. So I, I'm okay with aluminum clad wood windows, but I'm a little concerned about snapping volume drift, which seems to be more commonly not major, but of aluminum quality.
I can understand that at our residential level, but we have to need an energy code. That's the weakest part of our envelope, so we tend to have one pane of double-glazed insulated unit that fills the window and then create the molye work. I mean, I think we have to get a variance.
If you did simulated divided light?
If you needed an energy code? We generally do, yeah.
I mean, that's a much higher fall.
Okay, we can absolutely look at that.
I think just that rather than the snapping.
Okay.
So one, one piece of glass, but it's.
Yes. That's fine, I think we can actually. Sure.
Change the mic.
Here we have that. Is that a special condition?
I understand that that would be an additional special condition, if you care about that particular point.
Okay, so we're gonna add another condition, which will be incorporation of simulated divided light windows.
Aluminum clad double-pane wood windows with simulated divided glass.
Simulating divided glass. I'm gonna just catch that on the end of the, I think that's the list.
That is it. And I think, Madam Chair, just to be clear, that the condition should acknowledge that that's what controls over the classification of materials to be used, because member who was referring specifically to our statement that there would be snapping volume drifts in this middle. So just to avoid any inconsistency between the application, this document, that the decision.
So will we amend that list? Okay, I need to take a, can I have a motion to Madam Chair to? Okay, I need to take a, can I have a motion to Madam Chair, to the special amendment decision? And second?
Second.
Call roll to that. Baldwin?
Yes.
And?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
On?
Yes.
So Madam Chair, I understood that you did not want me to rehash and re-present all that was presented at the first session of the hearing, so I've not done so. Having said that, I just want to offer this, I don't know how you intend to end up the remainder of the meetings you're going to commit, and how extensive a public comment you're going to commit, I presume, you will. And so I would just ask for the opportunity, if there are further questions that board members have, as a result of public comment, or as deliberations occur, that I have an opportunity to address those at the time, to get a sense of where board members stand, as compared to where they were five to six weeks ago, when obviously Mr. Law wasn't in attendance, I understand for the record in this eligible voter. But if there are additional questions that arise as discussions occur tonight, just appreciate the courtesy of the opportunity to address those.
Certainly, okay.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to public comment. There were several things that happened, well, there were two things that had to happen before we opened it up for public comment. First, I'd like to call, so what we're going to do is, I'm going to ask Attorney Rayne to make a statement. There are some counselors who have asked me to make statements, since they don't want to make them themselves. And it happened at the last meeting, there was a conflict with some council meetings, and they couldn't be here. So if those counselors want to make their own statements, they're certainly willing to do so, but I'll read them into the record and not. And then we will go to public comment in the room, and then we will go to public comment or level. So let's, I will open, open public comment and begin with Attorney Rayne. You have to hold it light, right up to your lips.
Like that?
Yeah, but it's got to be working.
And you got to talk loud.
You have to be very loud and close.
You have to be very loud.
Is that working now?
Yes.
Is it sufficient?
As loud as you can, close.
Okay, just fairly, I was asked by the chairman to comment on the mediation process and how we arrived with what was happening here. I represented the planning board in front of the land court. We went for initial conference in front of the land court last year. The court strongly suggested to the parties that they should pursue all efforts to mediate this case, to resolve this case, before moving forward with the court at that time. The court also stated at that time, in the light of the three-pronged complaint, that they intended, the court intended to rule on the legality of the DOD district before considering the merits of any decisions in the matter. At that point, I reported back to both the planning board and to the city council as to what was happening. The city council authorized us to pursue the possibility of mediation to determine how we could move forward. And the city council, along with other city officials, appointed a mediation committee that attempted to gain numerous members, included Mayor Holliday, City Council President at the time, Jared Igraman, Counselor Heather Shan, Bonnie Sontag was on the committee's chair in the planning board, along with M.J. Verdi, Richard Jones participated, Andrew Port participated, and Mayor Holliday participated. We exchanged communications with Attorney Costa and his firm. And as he stated last week, they put written conditions, they were there unwilling to move directly from the mass of the project, but we determined that it was more important to discuss other alternatives, to see what could be done to move forward at the mediation stage. Again, because it's an ongoing negotiation. That mediation took place, it was an eight-hour mediation at the end of September, it was a follow-up seven-hour mediation, and as a result of that, the mediation agreement was reached, which made the five changes that were outlined by Attorney Costa last week and presented at that point. That mediation agreement was signed off by all parties who participated in the mediation agreement, who agreed to support the mediation agreement and to support this new amended remand proposal. An order was filed with the court to remand the case back to the planning board for the decision. At the time, the city charter allowed the city council to approve any, not the decision itself, but to pursue any type of settlement that was involved. The city council did not approve the remand back to the board at that time, even though the remand order had been issued. The matter then returned to land court, and Justice Spicer had a hearing in early December, where he strongly criticized the parties. He criticized the city very strongly, and said that the city should have allowed us to go to the planning board directly, that the planning board is the zoning authority and the land use expert in the city that should be making this decision, not a politically elected board. Judge Spicer strongly pushed us at that point to consider that, and then, or the briefing schedule that the matter was wanting to go forward. In the new year, Council President Chan spoke to me, and she had spoke to other members of the board, we relayed what Judge Spicer had said. Judge Spicer, then, City Council President, we had an executive session, I did meet an executive session before the planning board, and I met an executive session with the city council, explained what Judge Spicer had said, explained what the order was at that point, and then the city council then took up the vote again, not to approve or disapprove the application, but to approve or not to allow a remand back to the planning board, which Judge Spicer had requested to be the board to make the decision. Judge Spicer had said in open court that he was in mind to send the matter directly back to the planning board himself, because he viewed it very strongly, this was a decision that should be made by the planning board. At the most recent city council, open session meeting, the vote took place, it was a seven-four vote, to allow the remand back. And again, it's a remand of the amended application, what was involved. It was very clear with the city council vote, they were not recommending approval or denial, either way, they were only allowing the matter to be sent back to the planning board, the planning board to exercise its discretion in reviewing the amended application that was produced through mediation, and that's why we're here for the second meeting today.
There is another question that's come up, and there's been some concern about something that everybody heard from Attorney Costa at the beginning of the first public hearing on this issue, and that had to do with what's been characterized as preconditions going into the settlement agreement. Could you speak to that as well?
I'd be happy to. Letters were exchanged, and I would not characterize it as a precondition, I would characterize it as a negotiation that took place. The IFS presented some of their demands, they had suggested what type of alternatives could be reached. We had written back a letter after meeting with the mediation committee, and made several different proposals to address some of the issues that were involved. We spent numerous time at the mediation, going through all of those proposals, going through what could possibly be done to address some of the other issues. When it became after the first mediation session, part of what we asked for was additional documentation from their engineers to why certain things could not be done, including there were some suggestions to lower the grade of the building, which affected stairs, and they had a letter presented to their, from their engineer, that that was not possible. We had the city engineer review that letter, review the materials that were submitted, and the city engineer agreed that that would not be a possible alternative, and moved strongly back at that, that this was the best alternative to allow for those conditions. That's when the second mediation session took place, when the agreement was reached.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Now I'd like to go to the counselor's statements before the public comment. Is Counselor Shan on or vote by any chance?
It does not appear so.
Okay, I'm going to read her statement first, because it reiterates, thank you, it reiterates what Attorney Rayne just said. Regarding Order 33203282022 authorizing the settlement, IFS and Planning Board, the council voted seven-four to return the mediation results between the city and the institution for savings to the planning board. The city council's vote was intended to allow the planning board to have final judgment on the IFS application. The city council is not the expert in land use and solely wants the final decision on the application to be made by the planning board, regardless of the outcome. That was from Council President Shan. I have a letter here from Counselor Donahue, and she's in the room, and I'd like to know if you'd like to state your position on this issue yourself, or would you like me to read this two-page letter?
Um, oh, I actually thought that it was read previously, but it wasn't.
No, we didn't have a meeting that night.
Okay.
So this is the meeting that would have happened the night you couldn't be here. So I'm giving you the option to do it, and if you want to, you'll have to go into the stand and speak into the microphone. Or would you like me to read all of this?
Um, maybe, what microphone did it be in, to the microphone?
Okay. It's been, I don't know where it is.
It's been posted.
It's been posted. You should also know before I read this, that Counselor Donahue and I had discussions and clarified some issues here. She was concerned about a variety of things around the process as well as the content. So know that a lot of this has been worked out with her already. This is from Counselor Donahue, dated June 6, 2022. Although I was unable to attend the June 1st planning board meeting, I've heard from other counselors and citizens who weren't in attendance. Reaching out to share with you some word to resident concerns, many of which I agree with them all. Please excuse the length of this letter. First, because the June 1 hearing was an in-person only meeting, many Newbury Court citizens did not have the opportunity to listen in or comment on the IFS settlement proposal. I also have been able to listen and speak on behalf of my ward to constituents if it was on Zoom. I understand two planning board members attended via Zoom, although it may be more difficult. I recommend that if, and this was for the previous meeting, they could continue to tonight, so she's referring to the June 22nd meeting. For additional public comment, cannot be on Zoom in the senior center, but the meeting be moved to City Hall Auditorium. I will be out of town, would like to listen to it. Meeting notes and recordings of the June 1 meeting should be available to residents as soon as possible. One reason I voted no to remand the IFS settlement proposal to the planning board in April was because of my concern that new board members perceived that the city council was in favor of approving this project. That could not be further from the truth. I find it very disconcerting that now that my legitimate concern of this misconception has in fact resulted in some members of the planning board being confused of meaning of the city council's vote to remand the issue to the board. As a result, it appeared that some of the planning board members believed and endorsed the mass scale of this IFS project. That is not the case, and not what the city council voted on. In April, the city council members only voted that the planning board was simply the appropriate body to do its homework and make a fair decision for the city on this topic. While I cannot speak for every city counselor, I can say with certainty that the majority of the council does not favor this project and the impact it will have on the neighborhood, our DOD, and ultimately our relationship as a city, with the bank and other project developers in the future. Most concerning is the constituents' trust of city government will be eroded. Residents believe that the planning board's new vote would be only regarding those specific items on the proposed settlement, and if they change the reasons for the March 2021 rejection. Primary rejection reasons were size, height, and mass, too big, not subordinate to the 1870s building, as per the Historic Commission's DOD ruling, not compatible with the historic residential area on its size. I, like many of the residents, believe those reasons have not changed, and the proposed settlement should be sent back to the land court for a decision. Both parties will have the opportunity to reveal the judge's decisions, should they not be satisfied with the outcome. Now, it has also come to my attention that during the 6-1 meeting, okay, this is all the issue of having to do with prior settlement conversations, but I will read it. During the 6-1 meeting, the IFS lawyer stated that prior to the settlement conversations, as a requirement for settlement conversations, the city of Newbury Court agreed that IFS does not have to reduce the square footage of the structure, and that including the Historic Commission not be mandatory for this decision. This is new news to me and to residents at the 11th hour of this entire process. Do you know who approved this pre-s settlement concession? Is there a signed document regarding these pre-s settlement concessions? I also don't know if city council members were aware of this prior to the voting vote in November and April. This certainly changes everything if this is true. Finally, the way this process is ruled out, the land court did not deliver the proposed settlement request to the planning board until sometime in May, and June 1 was your first meeting. The next public comment meeting being scheduled for June 22nd, and a decision provided to the court by June 24. I appreciate your efforts to meet the deadline. However, I believe this has not given your new planning board members and the public sufficient time to do all the research, understand the issues, be, comment, deliberate, decide. That is the end of Counselor Donahue's, thank you. And the third statement I was given comes from Counselor Preston. Is she available online?
I do not see her.
All right, this is only four paragraphs, and I will read it. It was dated June 13, 2022. There appears to be some confusion on why the city council sent the decision on the IFS settlement to the planning board. I was one of the counselors that voted for that action, and I wanted to explain my thinking, in hopes it will clear some confusion. Of course, I am only one of 11 counselors, and I do not speak for any of my colleagues on council. This email should serve as only my opinion. A rationale for sending the decision to the planning board was based on the legal advice from K.D. Law. It was my understanding that the judge presiding over the case was dissatisfied that the previous city council took the decision to reject the settlement and felt that decision should have come from the planning board. It was also my understanding that if the planning board were to reject the settlement, the city would have a better chance of winning in land court and/or appeals if the decision on the settlement came from the planning board rather than the council. Lastly, I have no particular expertise in land use, and feel a land use expert such as the members of the planning board would better serve the citizens of Newbury Court to make the decision. I want to be very clear that my vote to send the decision on the settlement to the planning board was not a request or expectation for you to accept the settlement. In fact, the original ordinance had language recommending that the planning board accept the settlement, and I amended the language to take out that recommendation. My amendment was accepted by the sponsor, Council President Heather Shan, and the ordinance that passed does not have any such recommendation to either accept or reject the settlement. I sincerely hope that the members of the planning board feel unencumbered in your decision on the settlement, and use your best judgment based on the merits of the application. I greatly respect the work that all of you do. Newbury Court runs on the backs of dedicated volunteers like you. Thank you for your service to Newbury Court, to the people of Newbury Court, Counselor Preston. Now I will open public comment to everybody in the room who would like to speak. I ask you to give your name, your address, and limit your comments to two minutes. You should also limit your comments to what you have heard tonight from the applicant, and in this case, I suppose, anything from other members of the public on statements such as written. But we do want to hear what you have to say tonight, and please, if you agree with someone else, keep it short and sweet, and just say briefly what you agree with, and we'll let us move on to the next person. As I did on June 1st, if you'd like to speak, I recommend that you queue up around the far side here and get ready to move up to the podium when the speaker has, previous speaker has finished. So anyone who would like to speak, please come forward.
Good evening. Tom Colton-John, 64, Federal Street, co-president of the Newbury Court Reservation Trust. The trust still opposes this project. This should have been a collaborative project with the neighborhood from the beginning, sadly, it's not. Unfortunately, this project still affairs integrity and character. Unfortunately, this project still affairs the integrity and character of this historic neighborhood. It is still detrimental to the neighborhood. This project is not in harmony with the purpose and intent of the DOD. This is a massive project store and has always been from the very beginning. Minor changes do not make it any more acceptable. The neighbors deserve better. We hope you will vote no on it tonight. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Pete Mackens. I live at 13 Prospect Street. As a direct abutter, I am opposed to the IFS settlement. I believe you would also be if someone was putting a 20-foot, 24-foot high and 122-foot wide brick wall only 14 steps outside your front door. But then, that's just my opinion. But tonight, your vote must be based on facts and the DOD requirements. Let's talk about some facts. The March 2021 planning board did and rejected this same building. That's a fact. The Newburyport Historical Commission ruled it did not comply with the DOD and the Department of Interior regulations. That's a fact. They both ruled it was too big. That's a fact. They both ruled it was not subordinate to the original 1870s building. That's a fact. They both ruled and denied the permit. In November of 2021, the city council rejected this same exact proposed settlement and sent it back to the land court. That's a fact. Why are we here again? We would not be here if the bank had not sued our city to abolish the DOD. That's a fact. We would not be here if our past city leadership, behind closed doors and ignoring the governing process, had not given IFS the two pre-mediate mediation concessions that were the primary reasons undermining the previous planning board's rejection. That's a fact. Now it's your turn to make a decision. Please reject this proposal. Send it back to the land court for a legal decision. Do the right thing, make your decision based on the DOD regulations and based on facts. Thank you very much.
Members of the planning board, hello. My name is Steve Niffmeyer, and my family lives in the historic Perry J. Swallow House at Fort Otis Place. Friends, the process leading to tonight's vote has been bewildering. Our historical commission is opposed to this project. The earlier planning board denied it. City council did as well, but yet, here we are back again. In my view, along with, I think, the perspective of many people in Newburyport, this is a defining moment in the character and identity of Newburyport. Do we care about the history and the preservation of our city? Many rave Newburyport residents worked hard and fought hard for the historic preservation of Newburyport in the early 1970s. It changed the course of our city and it shaped our very identity. When we look back at this board, will we be proud or will we be sad that our city has lost an important moment to protect our heritage? Tonight, will you be brave and send this project back to land court? Please do so. Newburyport will remember. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Clara Mastis. I'm at 3 Orange Street. I was a previous abutter to the bank at Fort Otis Place where Steve now lives. I'm number one. I'd like to thank all the effort that is gone into to explain what happened behind closed doors, the process. It is much appreciated. Transparency is so important to how we conduct ourselves. However, I keep on going back to the fact that the proposal in front of you, proposed settlement before you tonight, contains an expansion plan designed as the same size that was rejected at the planning board in March 2021. So in my eyes, it still falls short of the DOD. Whilst the negotiation, we look at it as a pre-concession. The main issue of size was taken off the table before negotiations began. So how could I be mean? Please reject it.
My name is Mr. Malatsi. My family lives at 16 Prospect Street, opposed to the IFS extension. Criteria established by the UOD includes a statement that new construction shall not disrupt the essential form and integrity of the subject building or its setting with the DOD, which of course is the neighborhood. Post-expansion worth adjacent businesses, its large, singular design, and institutional nature would absolutely disrupt the essential form and integrity of the neighborhood. I realize that this is a judgmental call, but please consider this point carefully. Can you really plunder a large institutional building down in the middle of a residential neighborhood and expect it not to disrupt the essential form and integrity of the neighborhood? The DOD also states that the special permit grant in the report shall quote adhered to any relevant provisions of the United States Secretary of Interior Standards for Treatment of Historic Properties. With respect to size, that standard states on page 162 within a list of what is not recommended, the following, according to the constructing a new building on a historic property or on an adjacent site that is much larger than the historic building and twice the size of the original historic building, this new building is certainly much larger than the historic building. It is therefore in direct contradiction with the Secretary of Interior Standards. Due to this contradiction and the contradiction regarding disrupting the essential form and integrity of the building setting, it should have concluded that this expansion is not compatible with the DOD. The residents agreed with the planning board to give detailed consideration of guidelines laid out in the meeting and those from the Secretary of the Interior. Such consideration should clearly show once again that this expansion is not compatible. It should be rejected. At the land court's side. Thank you.
My name is Carol Piper. I'm at 12 Otis Place, and I don't want to reiterate whatever I'm saying. I'm on a total, but the building was just too big. They said it was too big back in March when they denied it, and now we're looking at the same plan. That's, I can't understand why we keep going through this. So I'm asking for a no vote.
Hi, I'm Peter Mackery, 9 Otis Place in town. I want to, something that the chairman read in the statements, the last statement was, he spoke to me where the, I'm sorry, I don't remember who it was from, said that they appreciated the efforts to go into the boards. And I want to start by saying how much I appreciate all the work that all of you put in on a volunteer basis. It's an enormous effort and it is greatly appreciated. It was an enormous effort by proceeding, of course, more than what I mean. It was similar effort by the Historic Commission, of course, several, many hours of public comment, many hours deliberation. All with the same result, turning around to the institution and effectively saying, no, engage with the neighbors and come back with something better. So here we are with a new board, a new year, still dealing with the institution disregarding your predecessors' advice. At no point has there been engagement with the neighbors. At any point. The only, the closest we've come has been the institution being quoted in the paper saying, everything we do isn't good enough. We just can't satisfy the neighbors. This would give the impression that they've had anything to do with us, even though your predecessors said engage with the neighbors. They have not. So please take that into consideration. I do wish. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Anne Flossin. I'm here yet again, two years later. Thank you all for coming out this evening. And I want, I don't need to reiterate what everyone said, but thank you to Claire and Council Donahue and Rich and everyone who spoke prior to me. I agree with what they said. It's been a long time coming, but the board did vote. The Historic Commission did vote. We are right across the street from where this massive building we're looking at tonight. The proposal would be if you, you know, do not object it. I'm asking you to please reject it, let it go back to land court, let them decide. I think that's it. I don't want to cut up any more of your time, but please listen to the planning board and the Historic Commission. Thank you.
Erin Flossin, 3 Otis Place. Again, I want to also make the planning board members not experience fear. The chair's request, I'm not going to reiterate everything that folks have said tonight or in previous meetings. I think that just the key comment that I would like to key on is that this process is in sort of contrast to the work that many of our planning board members have put into this project previously. One of the defining features of the DOD is the fact that the Historic Commission provides professional opinion, review, recommendation of a proposal consistent with the DOD design guidelines. That process was done with deep analysis, both, I think, with this planning board or previous planning boards' participation, but really deeply with the Historic District Commission. They're the subjects, topic areas, experts that represent the city, represent the city in the context of the design guidelines for the DOD and the intent of this ordinance. And I think, you know, it's concerning and problematic in the fact that we have a project that is substantially similar or the same to the project that was already denied by this board and unit recommended by the Historic Commission to be denied. And in fact, that we're looking at essentially the same project, except for some of the king of the edges without the Historic Commission's professional insight into that. And it's not going into some details that have been talked about tonight, in that manner. So it's a concern that this isn't following the DOD process. Understanding there is a repent, that there is a settlement process that did take place, but it seems to me that you've all been handcuffed by that process. That's been laid out to that way. You still do. I agree with the judge at the court that you are the land use decision authority in this case, not the judge, not, not the settlement committee. It's this board. So it asks that you urge to be back to the proposal. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sean Sullivan. I live at 9 Prospect Street, my wife and my daughter. Erin just spoke to everything that I was going to say. But I would, I would urge the newer members of the council to really, there's a lot of effort and a year and a half, two years into this process. And I hope that the new members take on the responsibility of DOD and representing the DOD and go back to the last fight. The last board was very clear to areas that it did not meet. Downtown, like just requirements, failure to comply with the U.S. Secretary of Interior standards and the lack of compatibility with the adjacent historic properties due to size, scale, and mass. It was very clear in the last decision, and I hope that you would vote against us again. Thank you.
Good evening, all of you. Thank you very much. My name is Bruce Bobo. I live at 5 Broadfield Court. I'm also a Newburyport city councillor at large. There'll be a cross between my personal feelings as a citizen of Newburyport somewhat of that as a Newburyport city councillor, speaking on behalf of the constituency. All of what was just said prior, I think, holds really, really well. And I hope that you consider again what has been said and what was agreed upon and what you decided previously and go back to that decision. I think that we are here, unfortunately, because we ran into a judge who didn't particularly like the process of our city. Simply stated, I don't like it. Give it to me to send back to the planning board. And that's what took place at the council meeting. I think that it's really, really important that we are here because of that, not because of what the city council did per se. Please take it back, take a look at it the way you took a look at it before. Listen to what was said before us, before me rather, and vote no on this. Big, too big, too massive, not complying, and it certainly doesn't speak well for the community to, for this institution to step forward and plump this right smack down into this historic area. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jack Santos, 10 Spring Street, former resident of Fort Otis Place a few years back. Just three points, I'm trying to be sure, but I do have, one of my points is graphic. Is it possible to just end all that from copies of it to the board? Would that be okay?
We can get copies to the board members if you'd like. If you want to hand it to me, we can pass it.
And literally ditto, what everybody says is true, you know, we don't have to go over reasons why the Historic Commission threw this down and the prior planning board turned this down. I'm a little concerned about the precedent, and what the graphic shows you is that traditionally, commercial streetscape, streetscape being part of the decision that you're making, this went back on 150 feet. It's not got to go back 300. You're going to double how far back it goes. And there's a lot of other commercial enterprises that, on State Street, there are empty lots or old buildings that might get torn down. I think you're setting a precedent that's just going to fundamentally change the neighborhood. If you, if you can extend that commercial streetscape. You can do commercial business, but you don't necessarily have to have to say back, "Commercial streetscape, State Street." And then the third point was that the bank has options. Some of those options were immediately taken off the table. I don't think they should have been, reducing size is certainly one of them, and I've always felt that the bank has the option of building on its last open lot on State Street, on that side of State Street. They take that off the table, line up the corner of Purchase and State. And I suspect as part of it is, they didn't want to lose that iconic view of the bank facade coming up State Street. That's not the role of this board to say that I kind of agree with, say, your brand role of this board is to adhere to those decisions around streetscape, around transition of the neighborhood, and turn down, bring it back to the import and let the process play out. Thanks.
Saying no one else in the room who would like to speak, I'd like to open it up to anybody remotely participating who would like to speak.
Thank you, Chair Santos. The first person we have is Gary Corellis, if you'd like to address the question of what.
Hello, can you hear me? Hi, my name is Gary Corellis. I own properties at 15-17, 15-17 and 19-21 Prospect Street, directly opposite the institution parking lot. I own other properties in Newburyport and have owned property in the city since 1973. I currently live in San Diego. The proposed settlement is the same as the one that was rejected in November 9, 2021. Nothing has changed. The conditions of the proposed settlement are cosmetic in design. The abutters and the neighbors opposed to the current plan have issues which have not been addressed. The mass, the building height, noise, increased traffic, still need attention. The impact to the neighborhood is too great, as has been spelled out by residents at meetings. The planning board in March of 2021 rejected the IFS project because of its size. The vote by the board was for the best interests of the city and for which they are called upon to do their role. and for which they are called upon to do their role as planning board members. They also are entrusted with preserving the historical character of the city, and I hope that the board will review why it decided what it did and let the ISF litigation resume in Land Court. Rick Tainter of the planning board said a while ago that the addition is out of context with its surroundings. The opposition of abutters and residents speaks loud and clear to the fabric of the area. So to the planning board, I want to make my final request. Please think about all of those who have said no, the abutter, no to the existing plan, the abutters and the residents of the city. How many people have said yes? Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker we have is Charles Nutter. Mr. Nutter, you all come up here on your own as well. We'll take a pause there for a moment. Judy Meradian, or I didn't, I don't want to pronounce your last name.
Judy Meradian?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear, I just wanted to make sure you could hear me. I want to say that I agree with everything that has been said before me. So I won't, you know, reiterate what everybody else is saying, but I would like to take a different stance. You know, increasingly in this country, we citizens have less and less voice. Money and power, you know, it just speaks volumes. But in our, in our city of Newburyport, I always thought we had a voice and that money and power wouldn't win out over our voices. And so I would urge the planning board to support the vote of the previous planning board and let this go to Land Court if necessary. Let, let the Institution for Savings take us to court. It's just wrong what they want to do, and I think that the citizens of Newburyport have spoken loud and clear and we should listen to them, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Nutter, are you with us? Okay, Stephanie, anything?
I'm sorry, what? Yes, five backstreet.
Thank you. Stephanie, are you with us?
I am. Stephanie, ninety-three High Street. I want to be very brief, I know this has been going on for a long time. I agree with everyone who opposes this. And I've written letters myself. I especially want to point out, as Gary Corella says, that this is not just a concern for direct abutters. This has been a concern as any letters to the planning board, the test of multiple residents of Newburyport. And as Judy Meradian said, that it is, and Jim Roy said in a very good letter to the planning board recently, this is about, this is about power, about money against people. And I really do hope that the planning board will stand up for the citizens of Newburyport and let the Land Court, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nutter, I'm just going to circle back again and see if you're able to address the board. Mr. Nutter, are you with us? If there's anyone else out there in our online audience that would like to speak, please excuse those who would like to raise your hand. Chair, seeing no other hands at this time, if there's a Ms. Meradian having an issue or is she not there?
Okay. Bring it back in for deliberation. To begin, I'd like to allow Trent Costa to make any comments, like to throw some links or public comment portion.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board here, I have Costa. So I mean, a bit of a loss only in the sense that I did want to restrict my comments to your request to the matters that we brought before you tonight to address the outstanding concerns as in your June first meeting. Public comment, I've been taking furious notes and in fact, looking back to see some of what I took notes about on June first. And I didn't hear much that was different than what I heard on June first. We have a different perspective, as you might imagine, from the neighbors. We don't believe that this is a project that is vehemently or widely opposing the city. We think that it's a project that is opposed certainly by our group of neighbors who reside along the Jackson Roadways, you've heard that at this meeting, you've heard at the June first meeting. I'm not going to get into particulars of the process except to say, because I think it's important even though you've heard it said by your council, it was also stated in a number of the correspondences from the city council, that this mediation was a voluntary process. This wasn't a process that was forced upon by the Land Court judge. It certainly wasn't a process that was forced upon you and by you, I mean, the city, by the Institution for Savings. It was a process that was voluntary on the part of both parties to enter into discussions to see, as is often the case of living heads, if there was some common ground that could be achieved. We look closely back through your decisions, your special permit decision, denying a special permit a year and a half ago, two years ago, the site land denial from two years ago. And we looked at the basis for those denials, so we saw references, not just the size, but to massing, to aesthetics and to architectural design and to those sorts of concerns. And so we made a concerted effort, we thought, through the mediation process and even preceding mediation discussions about what parameters of that mediation might be to make it successful to try and address those concerns. We thought we had addressed them to a certain extent during the planning board process with our experts, but we attempted to further address those with our experts during the mediation process and bring it back up to you that we thought was improved, and we still think is improved. I'm particularly interested to hear where board members think, because we had much opposition points tonight. We had more of a mixed bag. Five weeks ago, we were reporting that it's just sort of the nature of support versus opposition. It's much more difficult to get supporters to come out meeting after meeting and it is to get the opposition to rally. But there were those in the city who spoke in support of this project back on June first. And I heard many members of the board, so much so that you instructed staff to draft these approval with conditions for your consideration tonight, or many members of the board talking about how they were not on the same page, so to speak, than some of what we heard from neighbors concerning streetscape, concerning aesthetics, concerning design, concerning the appropriateness of this addition for the neighborhood and for a location, which is clearly a buffer of sorts between both commercial and residential uses. It's an area that is in transition from one to the other. So we heard much at the last meeting about that and overall support from many of the members who were here tonight, so much so that we're continuing on responses. So I'm curious to see whether board members continue to have those views and continue to support the project, as I obviously hope that they will.
Thank you. To begin our deliberation, I just want to make a read to you, one summarizing statement, several statements that summarize the decision that the planning board took in March of 2021. And this is to focus our attention on our mandate. Our mandate tonight is to determine if the application before us eliminates or mitigates aspects of the proposed project that were denied at that time. So let me just read the summary statement on high level, not going to all the details of that decision. Based on its review of the application and on the historical reports submitted by the Newburyport Historical Commission, the planning board was unable to find if the proposed project complies with the aforementioned standards and criteria. Specifically, the board found that the scale of the proposed addition would not be subordinate to the existing historic structure on the site, disrupt the essential form and integrity of its setting within the DOD and would be incompatible with the size, scale and character of its setting within the DOD. And therefore, if a special permit could not be granted. So our job tonight is to determine if what we have heard from the applicant in this mandated application either eliminates or mitigates those issues that caused the planning board to deny this application back in March of 2021. So this is deliberation, it's a discussion among planning board members. You may comment now if you'd like, just to let you know the rest of the process. We will read through the special permit decision. And at any point you want to stop and comment or discuss, we can do it at that point as well. And then we will take a vote on the special permit decision and following that, the site and the decision. Let me open it up for discussion among planning board members right now. And Attorney Lane, if you're willing to join us in the next one.
I'll start, so I was actually going to read that paragraph, thank you for reading it. So, yes, the decision that we made in March of 2021 was about size, scale, character within the DOD and within the neighborhood. And I appreciate the work that the committee working on the settlement agreement are here. But I don't think that the, I'm sure that the points that were agreed to in the settlement do not relate at all to size, scale and character, perhaps character to a certain extent. I think Attorney Costa, they were just writing down some of the comments he made, and he was wondering about whether the board agreed or disagreed with that there was improvements dealing with streetscape, aesthetics and design. And none of those things have anything to do with what the board made this decision on in March 2021. Our decision was entirely, at least, you know, to the very large degree, made on the basis of size, scale, massing, relationship to the surrounding neighborhood. So I guess from my point of view, I can't actually agree with anything that's in the draft decision. I would be happy to resubmit the decision that we made in March 2021. I don't see that anything has changed that relates to that decision. Now, my, my opinion is obviously not shared. My colleague wrote it a different way than last year and probably will vote the same way because he has a different interpretation of how, of how to interpret the application of downtown over there. But I guess I would just say that that's, I don't see that anything that has been done in the settlement agreement touches the reasons for the disapproval last year. And I think it's avoiding the issue, I think it's just looking at decoration and I think Mr. Travis mentioned cosmetics. And so that's, I guess, what I would say is that the, I don't see anything that has changed in the substance of what we decided last year.
Thank you, as some of you may know, and as my colleague, Ken, you just mentioned, there are only three members of the past planning board that voted to approve it. I was one alone, the other two are not here. And in tonight's meeting, there are four new members, four members, one was in the House of Health, all of them voted. And Mr. Sanders, right, I don't see my position changing. However, I am in complete agreement in harmony that the changes made are unanimous and in fact, some might editorially say just genuine. So I am in complete agreement that if I would have voted against it, I still would vote against it because the changes are minimal, thank you.
So I am in agreement, I was on board previously and I vote it out in the original decision. While I think the changes are aesthetically an improvement, they don't change what I think our decision is based on by understanding whether the project complies with the DOD. I don't think that it does due to its size, scale, mass type and the impact of those factors on the store building and neighborhood. I wish we weren't here right now, I know that the DOD, its main challenge is part of this limitation and I feel like that's unfortunate.
Can she be heard? Okay, good.
Sorry, I'm quiet. So I feel like we're in an unfortunate position. I don't relish denying a project. I think we could have gotten somewhere originally if the applicant had listened to the main concerns. I feel like most of the, while there were changes, then it ended up being a better project than what was initially proposed. I don't think that the changes that were made did a lot to address the factors that the board was concerned about at that time.
I'm going to keep it to this side of the room. So I listened to my comments at the June first hearing, I'm one of the new members, to be perfectly clear. And I, and I was worried that I might have misspoke or something, but I actually walked through in some detail how I felt about the massing and the compliance with the ordinance. And I would stand by those comments. I think I probably would have approved the application in March of last year. I may be in a minority, but we'll find out tonight, I suppose. I do want to clarify that I don't think that means I endorse the process by which we're here or any of those things. It does sound like something was broken, but I wasn't here and I can't really speak to it. By, just by definition, litigation is divisive and dysfunctional. So clearly something went wrong, but I don't have the luxury of really thinking about all of that process. I wish, certainly wish there was more communication and dialogue back when it could happen in a more amicable manner. But, but if I'm being true, which is what I think I'm being charged to do, and I appreciate the council, you know, emphasizing the role of the Land Board in this matter, I would support the application. I probably would support that, I am glad it's approved. I can imagine more improvements might get even better, but I think I'm satisfied and ready to.
Can you hear me? So I had sat through most of the meetings, I was just absent for a couple of the official meetings in the process, process over the last two years, so I was ineligible to vote for. I tend to agree with my colleague, Dr. Walters, that there are slight changes in the, in the, in the design. They are not, not large changes, fairly unanimous. However, I do think that the addition is compatible with the existing structure. The use of materials with the brick and the copper, make it, to me, compatible with the existing structure. I do find that it is, in my view, subordinate to the existing structure because of the distance away from the, from the historical building. So that's one of the requirements on the DOD. I have, I have some concerns with the building, but I think that as far as the height, the height is similar to some of the other adjacent residential buildings. It's lower than some of the others on the street. I went back and walked the streets today, walking all the way down the street, looking down Prospect, and as you walk down, you see the houses and you see the brick buildings at the far end of the street. And this would be just an extension of that, in my view. We're not, we're not doing anything to the existing historical building. There's no changes, there's no additions to that, no changes to that building. So a lot of the conditions of the DOD, in my view, are, don't, Julie, don't refer to this, it's just a few of the sections. I think that, I think the addition reinforces the use of the building as I think that, I think the addition reinforces the use of the building as the bank headquarters. I think if we look at the underlying district, it is a commercial district. How it relates to the other structures in the DOD, I think there, there are many large brick buildings in the DOD. There's some five-story buildings, four-story buildings. So this is not as large as some of those, although the mass is large. I think the attempts to break up the surface to make it appear less massive with the addition of the landscaping helps that, helps to address it. So looking, looking at the condition, I think it is consistent with a lot of the DOD. So so I think those, those are most of my thoughts on this. I think I'm leaning towards approving this of those reasons, because of the underlying district being a commercial district. It's the one area where the commercial district extends closer to the houses, but the houses are adjacent to a commercial district. And that is different than a lot of the other sections of here.
I also have a new member on, on the planning board and did not participate in the process that led up to that. But I also looked at my comments from, from the last meeting and, and we talked a lot about scale. We talked a lot about the height of the street wall relative to the existing houses opposite what the proportion of, of the street would be in the view that we're looking at here. And, and it's, it's hard for me to, to criticize the scale of the building at, at two stories. I've heard comments about the massive scale of the building and I have to say, I'm just not sure that I, I agree with that. The architect has made an effort to break the footprint of the building down into the scale of separate structures that are similar in scale to the adjacent residential buildings. I, I think gestures have been made to, to try to break down the old wall massing. So, so there's been a lot of subjective comments about the massive scale of this that, that I have a hard time supporting. In terms of being subordinate to the historic building, I, I would agree with, with, with all that distance is a big part of, of, for me, what makes this a subordinate structure. It's at the other end of the block from, from the existing building. There is open space at, at the corner of State Street. And I think that goes a long way toward mitigating the connection between the two. And, and the scale is not dissimilar. Lastly, this, this is a neighborhood that, that is adjacent to State Street, the primary commercial corridor in the city. And it's inevitable that the commercial character of State Street is in places where it'll reach back into the neighborhood. There's precedent for this a block away. Another bank has extended back into the neighborhood at a similar scale with a similar kind of massing that we are looking at here. And, you know, I think that's kind of what happens in, in border neighborhoods like this where, where there are two competing uses, residential uses and commercial uses. So I, I think that, given the bank's programs, given the square footage requirements, given what could have happened here relative to what was allowable by zoning, I, I think that there has been an effort made to try to respond to the concerns that they so I, that's kind of where I end with the overall process.
I'm also a DOR or member. And I, I do hear all the comments. I think this is a really unfortunate situation that we're talking about this particular neighborhood because it is an overlap of residential and commercial neighborhoods. But I do believe that it's also a property owner right issue. I believe that when you're purchasing a home that's overlooking a plot of land that may be vacant or apartment lot, that it is a fair assumption or process to go through prior to moving there to assume there would be change if it's a commercial setting. I think that that's what's happening here. And, and I see both sides. I, I do support this project. I don't find the building to be perfect, but I do find it to be acceptable. And I do believe that in hindsight, as with my other order of respect, that it is an office coordination because of the distance. I think that the front of the property really landscapes well the entire project. And even State Street, I think, still really highlights that front structure in its historic nature. So I am looking to support this project.
On June 1st, when we opened this public hearing, I made a mistake. I said that when I voted in the settlement agreement negotiation to support the settlement agreement, that I was understanding that it was only to bring it back to planning board for consideration. When I reread very carefully all of that agreement that I submitted, I realized that I was signing also to support acceptance of this settlement proposal when it came back from an application by the planning board. So I have no choice but to vote in favor of this application. I'm legally bound by that signature and I cannot change that.
All right, everybody who's spoken on the planning board, so I think we should read through the decision. As I mentioned earlier, at any point where you want to make a comment or make a change or reiterate something that we've already decided, as to go into the decision, please do so. I've asked them, our board secretary to read through the decision. And she will go from here.
So Bonnie, which one do you want to start?
The special permit application.
Start at the beginning, procedural history.
Let's start with existing conditions in context.
Existing conditions in context. The property consists two parcels in the downtown area. Ninety-three State Street, now fourteen Lot Forty, and twelve Prospect Street, now fourteen Lot Thirty-nine. The combined property is bounded by State Street on the northwest, Prospect Street on the northeast, Otis Place on the southeast, and five lots on southwest. The property is presently served by three driveways, one on State Street and one Prospect Street. The site itself is entirely within downtown U2 business district, where dimensional requirements lack all buildings, i.e. affordable maximum of this use, but is across the street from an R3 district, along a portion of two sides, Otis Place and Prospect Street. In simplified terms, oh, there's a the Karenna Prospect Street. In simplified terms, while the underlying business zoning permit permits buildings to use to reach forty feet height otherwise as of right, the downtown overlay district zoning also gives further discretion to the planning board as to overall compatibility of such structures in relation to any existing structures on site or within the surrounding district, e.g. massing and sign. Existing structures on the ninety-three State Street lot consist of a historic eighteen-seventy structure, which is the original institution for savings building, a nineteen-oh-three addition to that structure, and a nineteen-eighties addition attached to the Buick Historic Building. Twelve Prospect Street lot includes two separate parking lots separated by a circular driveway providing access to the private home. And a twenty-ten fountain and block tower corner of State and Prospect Streets. Property is within U2's National Register Historic District listed in nineteen-eighty-four. The original nineteen-eighteen seventy bank building significant glory for its architecture and for its place in the history of the city. With the exception of another bank building across Prospect Street that beat one State Street, all buildings on the U2 parkings are designated as supporting structures to the National Register District. In addition, nineteen-eighty, entirety Prospect Street is documented, formed G as a historically significant streetscape. Findings. In order to grant this special permit, board must determine that proposed new construction alteration or demolition meets all the requirements of section twenty-seven of the report's zoning ordinance downtown overlay district. And in addition, applies some special permit criteria of subsection ten H seven of the ordinance per section twenty-seven F. DOD specific special permit criteria findings. Section twenty-seven F five A of the zoning ordinance establishes following criteria for new construction and alterations in downtown overlay district. New construction and alterations must be compatible with existing historic buildings and structures of the DOD. New construction and alterations in the DOD shall not disrupt the essential form integrity of one, the subject historic building's structure or exterior architectural features; two, the lot where it is located; or three, it's set within the DOD. Moreover, new construction and alteration in the DOD shall be compatible with size, scale, height, color, and paint color, material and character of the subject, X historic building's structure or exterior architectural feature; Y, the lot where it's located; and C, it's set within the DOD as the case may be. In reviewing the application in the DOD, section twenty-seven F three A of the ordinance requires the planning board acting as special permit branch authority to adhere to and relevant provisions of United States Secretary of Interior standards for treatment of historic properties, guidelines for preserving, renovating, restoring, and reconstructing historic buildings, including all related guidelines, ordinance, and other official guidance promulgated by the National Park Service Secretary Standards. Based on its review of newly submitted plans and applications taken into consideration in historical reports previously submitted by the report's storage division, planning board was able to find that the proposed project as revised applies to the DOD standards and criteria. Specifically, board found that perceived height, fenestration, and massing of the building had improved for adherence to the SOI guidelines specified in the revised proposal with the changes outlined below, which further address the planning board's expressed concerns from the prior plans. One, lowering the addition's cornice height, as well as continuance of said cornice height through the connector, replacing the exterior treatment for said cornice power. Two, along the addition's Prospect Street side, Central Bay will be given a recessed appearance by extending the building sides towards Prospect Street to provide an eighteen three, the side of the addition is utilized with different color variations in the nineteen-eighty addition so as to distinguish it visually provided. However, the brick side of the connector shall be consistent for the nineteen-eighty addition. Four, first floor at-grade windows on the addition's Prospect Street side will be improvised
Thank you.
of spandrel looking glass. Five, a revised landscape plan, including a comprehensive planting plan on Prospect Street and Otis Place. Dense plantings, plant beds approximately six inches above the grade side.
Excuse me, Chair. I have some comments on this section, and I don't know, would you like it now or later? When you hear this comment, I'll be making comments such that this, you'll see it's very similar to the bank. Where it starts specifically, the board found that the perceived height fenestration in the assing of the building had been improved. I am strongly proposing that the word improve be stricken and insert it with the word modify. Just for the rest of the board's consideration, I feel so strongly in this that if this is not changed, then I hopefully will not feel that I'm struggling with the board, that I cannot approve of this special permit.
Also, I guess the question about number four, spandrel glass should be modified to reflect the changes that were given to us more recently.
Yeah, sorry, if I'm not mistaken, I, I assume that that was a special condition, but this necessarily alter the, the reference here to the spandrel glass because there's still spandrel glass, correct?
Yeah, this is more of a placeholder for that, that there will be a special condition based on composites on the overlay to expand on that. So if you look at this, it's just referencing the first four at-grade windows being spandrel glass, the rest of it takes time to condition. Unless you prefer to have a exploded piece.
We could add Princess Lebriz's condition here and or something to that.
Yeah, or, or, or say, or in the alternative, as, as something like that, just sort of not saying here it is spandrel glass and later on say it's something else.
Okay.
So we could just reference the condition.
Yeah. Especially since it references Prospect Street in this word.
To Don's point, you have something special about this, or does anyone disagree with him?
I agree with you.
The last sentence could read, if everybody agrees with Don, and I want to make sure this is agreeable to everybody or finding the word. Specifically, the board found that the perceived height fenestration and massing of the building have been modified for adherence to the Secretary of Interior's guidelines. Not if I was an acceptable word to everybody? We'll change that. Anything else at this point?
No, no, I'm sorry.
So Ben, would you please?
In making these findings, the board evaluated officials' projects against relevant positions of Secretary's standards related to official guidance as follows. One, new additions to historic buildings, size, scale, and massing of new addition all contained to the conditions of overall long and three-dimensional qualities. Board found that perceived height fenestration and massing of the buildings had improved through the revised proposal included changes such as lowering the addition's cornice height, recessing the Central Bay along the addition's Prospect Street side, utilization of different brick color variations, use of spandrel glass on the first floor at-grade windows on the addition's Prospect Street side, and revised landscape plan to include comprehensive planting plan along Prospect Street and Otis Place. The above five proposed design changes visually mitigate height and massing the addition in relationship to the existing historic structure on the property and to the nearby residential structures. Therefore, the addition does not detract from the historic character of the district that appears to be subordinate to the existing historic structure.
So this first one, clearly it would be true to throw out if we agree with Don. But anytime that particular statement about height fenestration, massing of the building have been approved, it will be changed to modify. But if there's anything else you want to add here on any of these, please do so now.
Thank you. I'd like to also pose for my fellow board members the following change in paragraph number one. The last sentence starts, "The above five proposed line changes officially mitigate height and massing in addition, in addition to relationship to existing historic structures on the property and nearby residential structure." Therefore, the addition does not detract from historic character, et cetera, et cetera. I am proposing to delete the following. It says after the, I am proposing to delete the following phrase, "Above five proposed design changes officially mitigate height and massing of the addition in relationship to the existing historic structure on the property and to nearby residential structures." Therefore, the So what I'm proposing at the end of certain last of the read is follows. The addition does not detract from historic character of the district and appears to be subordinate to the existing historic structure. Again, the reason for my change in this, that in my opinion, this change in this sentence would indicate that there was some, you know. Modification and improvement, and again, as I said before, not through. Anyone's deliberate action, but I think it's it's disingenuous and we should simply state the facts without necessarily opinion on this thing.
Other comments on Don's proposed change? I guess the difference. To the reading of this, to delete those details, just. Include a partial of that sentence. Addition does not detract from historic character of the district and appears to be subordinate to the existing historic structure. Go with that? Anyone?
And make changes about the spandrel glass.
Correct.
Number two, depending on its location, it may be possible that an addition slightly taller or slightly larger in historic building may be acceptable as long as it is visually subordinate to historic building. Post addition is larger than historic structure, but is also separated from historic structure a reasonable distance from the nineteen eighties edition in the middle. After review of the revised plans on pre-stand, planning board found the larger addition acceptable, received height fenestration and massing of the revised proposal. Are more consistent with the S O I standards, including changes such as lowering the additions' corn site. Resessing the central bay along the additions Prospect Street side. Utilization of different brick color variations, use of spandrel glass on the first floor at grade windows on the additions Prospect Street side. And revised landscape plan to include a comprehensive planting plan along Prospect Street for this place. Planning board found, proposed design changes lessen the perception of building mass and its impact on historic building and those changes contribute to the addition appearing visually subordinate to historic building. The addition is located to the rear of the parcel and is connected to another. Later addition to the original historic structure thereby reducing the impact of its size on the whole parcel. The above five proposed design changes contribute to the appearance of subordination.
I'm not too many of these that, again, my appreciation, you know, my fellow board members. This goes to the sentence that says. Last sentence, the third to last sentence, it begins. Planning board found that proposed design changes lessen the perception of the building mass, et cetera, et cetera. Issue I have with the word is lessened. I I think there's been some agreement that they extend the minimus changes on that. And I surely would value any other word on my members because. I actually did use the word somewhat less, and then I think that introduces subjectiveness into this decision. And so I'm hoping one of you can come up with something better for that, for that sentence there. I I was okay in the second to the last sentence, but again, I'd be value the input from any of you. Where it says the addition is located to the rear of the parts and is connected to another label location. Historic structure, common thereby reducing the size of the whole parcel. I'm sorry, the last, above five proposed changes contribute to the appearance of subordination, you should use the word contribute, so. I was okay with that, but again, I simply throw out, if any of you have any other suggestions. On that section, I'd welcome.
I just have a question as to whether. In this case, repeating all five changes is makes sense because. Again, I'm probably not voting for this, but the idea of different different brick color variations. Use of spandrel glass on the first floor at grade windows and a landscape plan, whether any of those have anything to do with making it subordinate. It seems like they're, they deal with other things other than subordination, so I I I almost suggest that you, and again. This would be for those who support this, but I almost suggest that limiting this to lowering the additions' corn site. And recessing the central bay might be the two items that anything to this coordination.
I'm sorry, thank you, just the Chair, I just want to make sure I'm clear on whether.
I would agree with Frank comments to narrow the, narrow it to this particular section because I do agree with with those ideas. Necessarily contribute or or are relevant to the historic making support of historic building. Type of color brick really does change something supportive, really for the mass issue or disposition.
Any problems with eliminating those other elements in that sense?
Back to Don's first question, we have trouble, do you have, were you saying that the. Statement of the planning board found that proposed design changes lessen the perception of building mass, you wanted to change the word lessen?
Yes, yes.
Reduce the perception of building mass and.
I guess the issue that I have.
Or is it just something bigger than that?
The issue that I have is I don't think these changes have made any impact on it. And that's where, that's where this. You know, I'm suggesting some some form of a change there.
So Don, what about just saying the planning board found. That the addition here is visually subordinate to the historic building.
Yes, that would be okay with me.
Strike out and make strike the last sentence of that paragraph of the above five proposed design changes.
No, I I I appreciate I was looking for some, for that section, thank you. Yeah.
Even worse.
No, I I. I I my, my preference would be to delete it and just keep it minimally as just you had suggested that. Again, I think the word contribute provides some. It's the devilous, I think. Or at least pretended to be specific.
Okay, okay, number three, number three. New additions in densely built apartments, height and setback from the street should generally be consistent with those of the historic building and other surrounding buildings in the district. The side of the proposed addition is broken into elements that attempt to give the impression of separate buildings. The board found that the scale of these elements received height fenestration and massing of the building. Then improved through the revised proposal, including changes such as lowering the additions' corn site. Resessing the central bay along the additions Prospect Street side, utilization of different brick color variations. Use of spandrel glass on the first floor at grade windows on the additions Prospect Street side. Revised landscape plan to include comprehensive planting plan along Prospect Street and for this place soften support edges of the project, compliments. The abutting residential neighborhood respects the context of the abutting structures. The above five proposed design changes contribute to the visual variety in the neighborhood while providing similar height structures on both sides of Prospect Street. And work.
Same as before, I would suggest in the third line, the revising the word improved to modified. Or changed if we get tired of using the word modified. And. I would then also further down where it it says revised landscape plan, including not planning the wall, et cetera, et cetera. And it says soften support edges to the project. I just wanted to throw that out, I'm okay with that, if the rest of the planning board is, I'm not necessarily the guru in architecture and landscape architecture, knows that you are. More adept in that area than I am, so. For that, please, and then the very last sentence, I think. What I would suggest is what that did suggest, just deleting that section, you know, just the word. I'm sorry, I just need you to be able to make, wasn't it with the last sentence, but you really suggest. Trying to follow where. Oh, you know, my other question was words soften, but if you all think those changes do, then I was okay with that, I just wanted to throw it out to see what the rest of you brought on that. So, okay. Who else?
Number four, new exterior additions, three fourteen. In historic buildings, existing proportions, site and setting help define the general grandeur for enlargement, assess relationship between actual size and relative scale. The addition is supposed to be constructed along Prospect Street and goes place facing historic residential buildings. Project setting is thus characterized by domestic scale buildings, but also as part of the B two zoning district, where commercial buildings are prevalent and generally larger. Board found that the perceived height fenestration and massing of the building had improved through the revised proposal. Including changes such as lowering the additions' corn site, assessing the central bay along the additions Prospect Street side. Utilization of different brick color variations, use of spandrel glass on the first floor at grade windows on the additions Prospect Street side. And revised landscape plan to include a comprehensive planting plan along Prospect Street in that place. These improvements present streetscape that is more reflective, consistent with that created by abutting structures on Prospect Street in that place.
Two changes there, I may suggest one is again changing where it's going to modify. And further down, it has these improvements present, I guess I would, I would, I guess I am proposing to use the word modifications.
Number five, rehabilitation S O I standard number nine. New additions, exterior alterations or related to construction, new works should be differentiated from the ones that should be compatible with the massing size, scale, and architectural features. To protect the historic integrity of the property and its environment. Board found that new addition design has been improved through the revised proposal, including changes such as lowering the additions' corn site. Resessing the central bay along the additions Prospect Street side. Utilization of different brick color variations, use of spandrel glass on the first floor at grade windows on the additions Prospect Street side. These design improvements work together to differentiate old from new in a whole manner which protects the historic integrity of the property and its environment.
Similarly, I would suggest revising the word improved first line to modify. And certainly in the last sentence, I would suggest using the word design improvements to design revisions.
Like provisions better.
I don't, yeah, I was trying to be. Shouldn't I should have my.
Just, we want to keep it consistent or we want to make it exciting, but. No, I said provisions. Good.
Unless there's a re, a legal reason not to.
Number six. New construction within the boundaries of historic properties and P S Technical Preservation Service, protecting the historic setting in context of a property. Doing the tree of open space, building density must always be considered in any construction on historic site. Board found that the revisions to the plans recognize and respond to the context of the property. Board found that perceived height fenestration and massing of the building were primary concerns of earlier plans, but then brought more in line with the S O I standards from the revised proposal. And then the revised landscape plan, including comprehensive planting plan along Prospect Street in that place helps to protect and respect historic setting of the property. The revised plans also preserve an area of open space, AKA a market park alongside and adjacent to this place, which was and is the consequence of project provisions made by the.
My suggestion is the third line. Second sentence. Where it says, which were primary concerns of earlier plans have been brought more in line with the S O I standards. Again, to me, this would seem to indicate that these changes have made some type of, have they been pushed to the S O I standard, and I don't think. That's the case, so because in this case I'm voting the affirmative, I would have just said, we should probably to meet the S O I. Which might necessarily have to brought more in line, because I don't think that they have been promoted much, because they're insignificant changes.
I'll, I'll give you another thoughts on this one. Is that, I'm sorry, is that replacing with beats or now beats, yes.
That would be fine. Let's see.
Number seven, new additions in densely built environments brief the least impact on historic building and district. Planning board found that since the addition will be on site with an existing historic structure, the addition should contribute to preserving the image of that historic structure, not detract from it. Planning board found, while the addition was larger than the historic structure, it is located some distance away off the lot. And the perceived height fenestration and massing of the building had improved through the revised proposal, including changes such as lowering the additions' corn site, assessing the central bay along the additions Prospect Street side. Utilization of different brick color variations, use of spandrel glass on the first floor at grade windows on the additions Prospect Street side. The planning board found, those additions located. In a way that has the least impact on historic building, but still expected. Done. Have that approved, first.
I'm looking for the word right now, I'm sorry, I missed that. Yes, thank you.
What do you mean? Sorry, is that revised or is that?
Planning board found that the proposed project does meet the downtown Holy Lake District D O D standards for new construction and alteration as the proposed project is compatible with size, scale, height, and character of the original institution. Savings, historic structure, the lot where it is to be located and it's setting within the D O D.
I have a question. It seems very strong statement. And I'm wondering if it makes sense, and I may be totally off on this, but I wonder if it makes sense to say. Planning board found that the proposed project does not mean, does mean so, the D O D standards for new construction alteration. As the proposed project gives the. The D O D standards for new construction alteration, as the proposed project gives the impression of being compatible with the size, scale. Would that be too mushy? I know that's not a legal term, but would that be legally terrible? Gives the impression that rather than just saying.
It could open significant questions.
It does, that's what I thought.
Would have a change.
So I think we have to be more, uh, direct. That's what the stuff which currently is.
Just pointing out the actual phrase that the defining reflects the language of the requirement that new construction operations must be compatible.
Yeah, we have to use language. Okay, I just thought I'd try it. Do you want to say something?
General special permit findings. In addition to the specific criteria and findings from the D O D special permit, planning board must also determine that the proposed project meets the criteria for all special permits as provided in section ten H seven of zoning ordinance. For the purposes of the D O D special permit, planning board includes requested use, is the construction of an addition to the existing building. Rather than any of the specific uses that are listed in section five D and described in section five E. It is important to note that the existing and proposed uses are office or retail bank, which are allowed by right in the B two zoning district or not subject of this application. The general special permit criteria in section ten H seven of the N C O, and for its project specific findings for each are as follows. One, the new request was instituted table whose regulations are elsewhere as in the ordinance, it's requiring. Strength for which application is made or is similar in parent heritage and committed uses in a particular district, but it's not specifically mentioned. The requested uses instruction of addition to an existing building in downtown the district. Section twenty seventy of the ordinance defines the term alteration to include any addition. Section twenty seven F states that all construction, alteration, demolition. Within the D O D shall require the owner of the relevant property to submit an application for a D O D special permit. Thus, the requested uses specifically listed in the ordinance is required as special permit. Two, the requested use is essential and or desirable to the public convenience center or welfare. The requested use, construction of an addition to the existing commercial building would be desirable to the public convenience by allowing for an expansion of business use in downtown business district. Great. The requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or undue pedestrian safety. Applicants submitted a report by a professional traffic engineer, A thirteen twenty, which projected that the proposed project would generate eighty additional trips onto the weekday. Including thirteen new trips in morning peak hour and twelve in the afternoon hours. The report included increases are negatively well, and well within daily fluctuation of traffic are therefore not expected to have an operational impact on area streets. The proposed project would provide number of parking spaces required by the N C O of the site. Will use so-called stacked parking, no off-site parking impacts are anticipated. Staggered employee shifts will minimize from the main queueing, to the extent that it occurs, the applicants that have a plan show that be able to make the property on site. Number four, requested use of not over limited public water drainage sewer system or any other municipal system to such an extent that the requested use or any developed use in the immediate area or in any other area of the city will be. Unduly subjected to hazards, effective health safety or the general welfare. The requested use is not over any public water drainage or sewer system or any other municipal system. I, any special regulations for the use set forward from the special permit table are filled, there are no special regulations for those use. Six, the requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts or be documented to the public welfare. Planning board found that the proposed project would not impair the integrity and character of the downtown public district. Board found that perceived height penetrations and massing of the building that improved through the revised proposal, including changes such as lowering the addition's corner site. Ressessing the center bay along the addition's Prospect Street side, utilization of different brick color variations, use of spandrel glass in the first floor accurate windows on the addition's Prospect Street side. And revise landscape plan to include a confidence of planting plan along Prospect Street in that old place. Number seven.
For the record.
Yes.
We're, for the record, we're, forgive you, preemptively assuming. Yeah, correct. This is my last, this is my, this is my last comment on this special committee, that's the size. I'll be fine the rest of your reading that.
Uh, number seven, the requested use will not by its addition to the neighborhood cause an access to that to use that could be documented to the character of said nature. The proposed use will not cause an access to that to use that could be documented to the character of said nature. Number eight, the proposed use is in harmony with the purpose intended of this ordinance. The proposed use, construction of the proposed addition in downtown Old Lake District is in accordance with the ordinance as expressed in sections twenty seven B, twenty seven F, three and twenty seven M five. I, proposed use shall not be conducted in a manner so as to admit any dangerous, noxious, injurious or otherwise objectionable fire explosion, radioactive or other master points, vibrations, smoke, dust, odor or other form of care. The proposed use will permit the banking use of the existing buildings to be extended and therefore would not generate any dangerous, noxious, injurious or other objectionable fire explosion, radioactive or other master points or vibrations, smoke, dust, odor or other form of care.
Okay, standard conditions, I'd like to jump, because they are standard, I'd like to jump to number three where there was a question and discuss that. It has to do with modifications to approved plans. Andy, I think this is yours, so I'd like you to, please, and ask us what you need to know.
Sure, um, so those newer board members have a piece of time because of, uh, attorney cost to spoken this very, uh, official part of the meeting, but. It's not intended to move forward projects of any sort, and maybe need some tweaks after the initial approval by boards. And so one way that both the board and the C P A have a recent time, um, been looking to impress those, it's rather having, um, every item come forward playboard. Uh, some lower level or smaller scale adjustments and plans, uh, you know, and don't necessarily more in force time are addressed by a staff level of your approval to determine whether it's consistent with the board's approval here. Give the staff any question about that, uh, whether it's, it's any question of being inconsistent or, uh, or of a more substantial nature, that would be forwarded to the board, uh, this case the playboard for review. Uh, rather than something that could refer you to the staff level as, as a political or consistent with the original decision. So the question we had here was just given the, uh, the nature of this project, the basis it had about it, was whether I want to move along with language and things like that, uh, or if you wanted, um, I think it may be one of the reasons in recent years I can recall. Um, or it wanted to vary these sort of language required everything to come back and say. Um, I'm not suggesting that we have any special thing here for that provision, I just wanted to ask that question for clarity, so.
So I had, uh, because this is such a tight side, and because, uh, every inch counts. I was concerned about leaving this as open as it is. And I had submitted to, uh, to Andy some, unfortunately today, some draft language that I would, that I would add at the end of the week. Uh, so notwithstanding previous statements, the placement of any exterior equipment that is not shown in the approved site plan. Including but not limited to transformers generators, H VAC equipment, and similar equipment, whether mounted on the ground or the building. Shall constitute a major modification required, required by the planning board. Um, I just feel that if you add anything on the ground, you're losing landscaping, and that's, uh, so that is going to directly impact the neighborhood. And I'm also concerned, and we had, uh, statements given to us about the H VAC equipment or the roof mounted equipment being enclosed. I just wanted to make sure that anything that changed that, that changed the appearance of, of the building from, from the bottom or from the side. Uh, would also be, uh, considered to be a, uh, a, a, uh, a major modification. So other than that, I, I don't have other concerns about that standard condition, but I do think that anything that is added to the site or the building that is, uh, that is a piece of equipment. That may cause, it may remove landscaping or may add any noise or anything, should be considered a major modification coming across.
So I understand that as being, uh, official sentence added at the end of conditions.
Yes.
Very true, thank you.
I just have one clarification, um, right, I may mention, you know, is major on, do you want it right now as a mission, or do you want to come back to the board and in turn the board would make a decision whether it's minor or major?
I actually think that it's, it's very likely to be something that residents are going to want to try to know, so I think you should be convinced of this.
So, other than that, there were no other, are there any other comments on standard wishes before those special conditions? Don, you good with that?
Yes, yes.
It's just, okay. Um, so let's go to the special conditions and read what are here and I believe we wanted to. Include these comments on major modifications for one or two years as well. Some remarks to that at the bottom of your memo to Andy.
I, I just didn't have a way to, to change that, I just, it's just the special conditions being adjusted to be consistent with the language as that. So number one and number two, uh, maybe just in some places.
Understood, yeah, we get to read those to, uh, to be consistent with the language, it's just add.
Okay, so that would be just really the last they are. In addition to the formal and standard conditions, planning board, your vagrants, approval subject to special conditions stated below. One, as represented by the applicant during public hearing, no utilities, HVAC or other chemical equipment shall be located above the exposed roof line other than minimal vents and similar small scale elements required for proper function of such equipment. Otherwise, all such equipment shall, as represented by the applicant's architect, be placed within and under the roof. Form so as to visually hide their appearance to aquatic properties in the public realm. In order to ensure consistency with this condition, the applicant shall obtain approval from the director of planning and development and zoning administration administrator. To confirm the proposed location of any vents, equipment, related attachments are consistent with this permit. And proposed plans before submission for any building permits to the proposed project. Number two, all site level utility equipment, E G transformers, gas meters, et cetera, shall be sighted and screened so as to reduce their potential for adverse impact on historic and architectural character of building site and adjacent properties and street spaces. In order to ensure consistency with this condition, the applicant shall obtain approval from the director of planning and development and zoning administrator. To confirm that any such equipment location screening is consistent with this permit as proposed plans before submission for any building permits obtained from the proposed project. And no such installations shall proceed without written approval of such details by the director of planning and development and zoning administrator. Irrespective of whether or not building permit is required for any such site level to the permit. Break, all utility interactions from an electric, gas, water, sewer, telephone, internet or other utility service to building and property. Including but not limited to meters, transformers, switches, cabinets and similar equipment, shall be located indoors and any conduits thereto thereafter. Shall extend underground from the street to the indoor location. If the applicable utility provider slash vendor documents in writing why it is not possible to provide such interaction in an indoor location and such interaction. May be externally located and permanently screened from all public rights to a, meaning from neighborhood residences. Such locations and screening details to be consistent here with, shall be reviewed and approved by the director of planning and zoning administrator prior to the start of construction.
There's just one type on there, should be rights of way, not right of ways. Anything, anything of substance on this one?
Number four, the applicant shall, prior to the commencement of construction, obtain written approval from the director of planning and development and zoning administrator. That the materials proposed for the finishes in the exterior object are consistent with some middle made by the applicant entitled classification of materials to be used as reference to.
So there should be a, oh, and you want to have something on that, because that's the only have the other conditions.
Oh, sure, uh, Chair, I was just gonna ask for point of clarification to it first, really with respect to, uh, Mr. Chambers' comment back on standard condition three, that language proposed relative to utility connections. Uh, I'm just confirming that that same language is going to be added to special condition one to the end, regarding all of the substance of special condition one, it's still gonna say, say what it says. Or we add to the end of it, that language indicates that that will be considered anything, uh, any addition of utility, uh, apartments is different than what's shown on your food plant. Will be needed major modification and require approval. Okay, that's fine. Um, to, to your second point, Chair, with respect to that, four, uh, the only comment would be, we need that adjustment, the classification of materials to be used with regard to the, uh, the windows, uh, specifically. Yeah, we were gonna do, uh, S D Ls, do with the external clip on it, we refer to them as. When, wood windows with snap in volume grid. Correct.
Um, so you're gonna have to just add that into number four, it's not, we, we approved it as a separate condition, so I think it might be more fair to wait just to.
That's fine.
So to be two, two more special permit, uh, conditions, one is the simulated light and the other is windows and shadow locks according to your submitted, um. Special condition exactly.
Sorry, I just got a chair, you chair, you just a question, uh, earlier on, this discussion of submitting materials with later date, is that, uh, from what I understand is that's something being added or, I'm just understanding, probably it was made earlier.
That had to do with pre, pre constructions, but I thought it was covered in the list of materials in that, in that submission.
Yeah, so I wasn't sure, the suggestion I thought was it something else, I had to go back to the board later, I just, I just understood what you're talking about, how do you, like, we're, thank you.
Did you know what I'm referencing in these two other conditions?
Yes, yes, thank you.
That is the special permit decision amended. I have a motion to approve this special. Decision to add a.
So moved. Second.
Don and Alden. Any further? Any further discussion at this point? All right, we need six, um, votes to approve in order, uh, in the affirmative to grant this decision. Alden?
Yes.
Yeah?
No.
Uh?
Yeah.
Jamie?
Yes.
Ever?
Yes.
Rick?
No.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. So, one, six votes and special comments approved. If you go through the similar process for the site plan review, there's a lot of overlap. I want to make it as efficient as possible. Um, and see how we can, oh, one thing I forgot, the dates on both of these have to be changed to June twenty second.
Yes, thank you, we'll take care of that, thank you.
Okay, just, uh, site plan review.
And Chair, just, uh, so, so there's not another oversight, maybe it's not just me, not being over cautious, but, um, Mr. Port was also going to have page three of the special permit decision. That referenced option, it was option four of the copper panels, which was like there in the decision.
Yes, sure, thank you, uh, yeah, it was a really, really late today, so that would be.
Thank you. All right, uh, let's see how we move this forward, start like. Uh, well, there, there's, uh. Well, in the plans and documents, I jump down there, it's exactly what, uh. Attorney costs just referred to the same option four for the copper and flashet connected mobile, um, documents. Um, already, let's see. Resisting conditions and context is the same as the prior decision. Probably should do. We should do, I think they're different categories, so there's gonna be overlap, but I'm sorry to say we do have to be the findings stopping against the standard conditions.
Findings, in order to grant site plan approval, the board must determine if an applicant's project complies with site plan review criteria set forth in section fifteen G of the community board's zoning ordinance and with the development and performance standards provided in section fifteen H of the NCO. These criteria standards and boards project specific findings for each are new and below. Site plan review criteria, community character. Section fifteen GA of the NCO requires that a proposed development, one, minimizes obstruction of scene views from publicly accessible locations. Two, minimizes impacts to important natural or historical features. Three, spreads objectionable features such as large plank walls, open ducts, or moving storage areas from neighboring properties and roadways. Four, is in harmony with the architectural style of adjacent buildings and immediate neighborhood. Five, if located within the national historic district, is consistent with architectural style, scale, density, massing, and setbacks in the district. Six, promotes design and architectural consistency regarding the architectural value and significance of the site, building, or structure. The general design, arrangement, and texture, materials, and color of the features involved in the relation of each feature to similar features of building and structures in the immediate neighborhood and surrounding area. Seven, is appropriate in regards to its size and shape of the buildings or structures in relation to the land area on which the building and structure is situated and to the adjacent buildings and structures within it. Planning board's deliberations regarding the proposed project are too focused on issues suppressed by the above criteria pertaining to harmony and consistency with the surrounding neighborhood. Number four and number seven, due to the scale and design of the addition compared to the adjacent residential structures. The applicant modified the proposed expansion plan several times during the course of the planning board's twenty twenty to twenty twenty one review process to address city department's any historical commission and community comments and concerns, particularly with respect to size, scale, and massing. Plans have been further revised on demand, and the board found that perceived height, demonstration, and massing of the building have been improved with the revised proposal, which includes changes such as lowering the addition's corner side, assessing the central bay along the addition's prospect street facade, utilization of different brick color variations, use of spandrel glass, first floor acrylate windows, the addition's prospect street facade, and revised landscape plan to include a comprehensive planning plan along Prospect Street in its place. Thus, the planning board found that these new changes that proposed was in harmony with and minimized, in fact, important historical features on site or in its surroundings.
Right, one comment is advising for modify. At the beginning of section here. That's the particular as that read, the second line says that demonstration has been approved, suggests were approved and certainly modified.
Do you wanna keep up with these new changes? Part in the last sentence, just.
I, I, I thought that was okay, but.
It's up to you. Just.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, as set forth in the decision of this board made filed together with the instant decision, the board voted to approve the special permit required for the project, so went to section twenty seven, zoning ordinance. Traffic, parking, and public access. Parking on site applies with the NCO, the applicant goes sixty-two parking spaces as part of the proposed project by using an automated parking system. Project applies with site and review criteria by minimizing the confused traffic and safety impacts, maximizing convenience and safety of the particular bicycle and pedestrian within the neighborhood and site and minimizes adverse impacts. Health, the project does not involve any substantial noise, vibration, gas, fumes, odor, dust, or other objectionable features. Appropriate screening for the proposed generator has been provided to minimize potential disruptive noise, noise generated by the parking system maintained within the structure. Public services and utilities, the proposed work will not overload any public water drainage or sewer system or any other municipal systems. The project will be serviced by the utilities that serve these systems. The city's Department of Public Services signed off those project plans. As shown in the stormwater report, there will be no additional runoff to the site along stormwater between the top site. The planning board's peer review were bound to the engineering, drainage, design, and analysis of the factors presented. Land use planning, criteria, this criteria requires an assessment of a project for consistency with the Andrew's goals, the city's master plan. The proposal is consistent with Andrew's goal LE one of twenty seventeen master plan, maintained and downed its role as the city's civic, service, commercial, and cultural center. As stated by the applicant, the proposed project will support an expansion of banking activity in downtown. Master plan also addresses preservation of neighborhood character, as stated in Andrew's goal LE four. Preserve the character of the city's neighborhoods while encouraging diverse housing stock. As described above, a community character board found that perceived height demonstrations and massing of buildings have been improved with the revised proposal, including changes such as lowering the addition's corner side, assessing the central bay along the addition's prospect street facade, utilization of different brick color variations, use of spandrel glass. In the first floor acrylate windows, on the addition's prospect street facade, and revised landscape plan to include a comprehensive planning plan along Prospect Street in its place. The reported historic character is a fundamental concern of the planning board, as is ensuring there's room to balance and reports historic development patterns. Project was able to obtain required special permit and thus the board approved the performance criteria.
Just changing the word, to modify. So that it's the described at six, seven, why? Eight, nine, nine.
Go back up.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry. Yes.
Board found a perceived height.
Yeah, third, third, there you go, thank you.
Open space and internal protection, there is existing landscaping throughout the property. No change in landscaping in open spaces for close proportion of the property closest to state streets. A revised landscaping plan has now been submitted to include a comprehensive planning plan along Prospect Street in its place, downed and in its place across six inches above the break.
Above, should be above.
Yes. Performance standards, the proposed project represents an expansion of the existing bank office use of downtown business district, which is fully developed and served by all municipal and private utilities. As a result, performance standards related to industrial and particular access and traffic impacts, lighting, landscaping, stormwater runoff, water quality, weapons, erosion control, environmental utilities are not a concern. For its project specific findings relate to site plan and architectural design, including architectural character.
Fifteen H, why is there a colon there at the end? Is that part of what's coming next or not?
Uh, no, I think that's. Oh, yeah, no, I see what you're saying, yeah.
It is related to the next two.
So we can say earlier, these are coming out anywhere it's.
Because you wanna leave colon there. Okay.
Fifteen H, the site plan and architectural design. The board found that perceived height frustrations and massing of building have been improved with the revised proposal, including changes such as lowering the addition's corner side, assessing the central bay along the addition's prospect street facade, utilization of different brick color variations, use of spandrel glass, first floor acrylate windows, on the addition's prospect street facade, and revised landscape plan to include a comprehensive planning plan along Prospect Street in its place. Board was able to find that the height and volume for massing of proposed project showing with unreference revised plans is compatible with the existing historic structure of parcel and will be bonding or nearby storage residential.
Question is the second line.
Fifteen H, the seventh, general architectural character. The applicant, the applicant presented several architectural designs for the proposed addition, including designs that attempted to respond to the surrounding residential buildings as well as commercial architecture. The board found that perceived height frustrations and massing of the building have been improved with the revised proposal, including changes such as lowering the addition's corner side, assessing the central bay along the addition's prospect street facade, utilization of different brick color variations, use of spandrel glass, and first floor acrylate windows, on the addition's prospect street facade, and revised landscape plan to include a comprehensive planning plan along Prospect Street in its place. Board found that building design compatible with the vernacular structures, historic character, and scale of buildings in the surrounding neighborhood as is required by section fifteen H, the seventh.
My last comment, my four. About change. To modify. That's the last comment.
Madam Chair, if I could just offer additional verification consistent with the special permit decision. There are references throughout these findings, I have to forward them to spandrel rat glass much as there was before. So I just suggested, Mr. Port, to take a similar revision, say stating something like, except those otherwise provided in the list of materials, given that we're adjusting those first floor windows, watching the size of the building, with the shadow lights, the spandrel glass. Thank you.
Conditions are standard. Rick wants to say something?
I would just like to make the same change to standard condition number three as related to the site plan and special permit standard condition, and then to go to the special conditions.
Are these conditions all the same as the ones in special permit?
Uh, there might be one or two adjustments just because of.
Because of language.
Yeah.
Any one reason or reason?
I don't know, the standard one, in my opinion, no.
No, not the standard one, special.
Yeah.
How are the special?
Uh, yeah, these are basically the same as it's in the previous one, so.
No, but we wanna make sure we add the, so that we're adding to the special present.
Right, as long as that's clear of the record.
Have you reviewed them yourself? Is there any reason to read them out loud?
So these special conditions provide, right, consistent with the special permit, so.
Okay, okay, I'll take a motion to approve the second one of you.
Oh. I move to approve as amended.
Second?
Not second.
Oh, well. Alden?
Yes.
Deb?
No.
Bob?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
No.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. So site plan review is also approved by officially closed this public.
I just, we did start by making the motion to the second.
Don and Alden.
Thank you. My thank you. Thank you specifically, Madam Chair, for your participation in the mediation process as well as in the serious hearing, as previously, I would like to thank all the board members for their time, certainly appreciate that this was contentious remand, the serious process and, you know, challenging teaching. So I appreciate the time and the effort, but just, obviously appreciate the, thank you.
We're gonna take a stretch break unless you actually have to leave your room, options have a stretch break. You have to, I know you have to go to roll back, and then you have the other end. Oh, yeah. I was gonna just take the document, see if anybody wants to make adjustments to what they said before.
Just wanted to say something, I still like.
Yeah, so sometimes it's linked, they send out a staff report, kind of, like, staff report.
There's a lot of stuff, really.
But it's the.
It's about. It's the end, it's just.
Yeah, although we.
Better do it in pictures and images.
Just really. Yeah, I think a lot of time. Yeah, I think a lot of time. Yeah.
Say what my love.
I don't. I mean, not that.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yes. Yeah.
Yeah.
No, we can.
Yes. But yeah.
Yeah.
Where you go. That's. What I'm first time reading. To hear it, yeah, to start. I'll say in whatever.
Somebody said. Yeah, that's somebody said that.
He said, no, I can. Can you say right now that's so here that it's not coming? Then it better got pulled back, yeah.
It's so. Your expertise.
Just when the. You guess what?
You'll still be. We're. So.
Yeah.
Under protest.
Yeah. Time under protest.
Well, I mean, China is. This is all the mind is awesome.
Uh, it will probably be tomorrow or today. Or more than that.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. I thought all the words.
Yeah, so.
We keep seeing, counting on the creative. That was before I started the pouch.
You want to say.
Twenty.
Yeah, read right now. Uh, oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. It doesn't, it doesn't have a line.
I think those are the. That heard.
Just want to make sure that all they do. Yeah.
That word. Yeah.
So I have to speak in the list for you to report it or not?
It's just improvised to reality.
All right. We're at the general business portion of our agenda. Short term rentals review of our planning board recommendations. I was going to take our recommendations from April sixth. And see if anybody wanted to make any changes. Based on the public hearing that we went through on the second, the next version, the last most recent version. In the short term rental proposed amendment. And the first section of this has to do with owner occupancy requirements. And, uh. What we originally had said was we were. For, um. Five members of the board supported the recommendation, there were two minority opinions. So the recommendation was that we supported allowing existing investor owned. Short term rentals on the mainland to continually authorize by special permit from the zoning board. I don't believe there's a special permit in the current proposal. So, uh, that's something to consider. And there were three conditions that the, uh, you know. Use must have been registered with the state as of August thirty of twenty twenty one. That date should probably be changed to when this version of the amendment was submitted to the council. So that would be obvious change there to go forward with this condition. He said these three conditions.
So this is a, this is our report just for people. So is there a different, substantially different version from? Who's being changed there? I just saw anything?
Yeah, it's a reason for that because I was reading, uh, going by the sale ordinance. And they suggest same thing where they're, uh. Registered by the date and the ordinance was going to the council for consideration.
I mean, if I'm not mistaken, I think what the chair is getting at is that the most recent advertisement of the hearing is what she's, uh, suggesting use as opposed to, uh. You know, some other prior day.
Data, data the new.
The data that. Yeah.
Yeah. I'm not making sense to catch me, but you guys got to be more awake than me to do that. All right, um, the use must strictly comply with all requirements, the ordinance including the off street parking requirements. And third, the special permit, well, there that goes, yeah, shall only apply to the current property. So the, if we say that it's, um. Not authorized by special permit, that they have to be approved for a license that may cover it.
I think this is, no, I think this, what we're recommending is a new special, right? This is my, this is not something in the ordinance is we're saying it should be, should be approved. Is a new special, they were recommending that new special be created to, um. To allow these things to continue. So I think the word special permit is still mixing.
Is it saying that every one of the nine or however many are registered, if they wanted to apply for a license. They would have to go to the zoning board deals for special permit?
That's what, that's why our recommendation was. I'm going to stick with that. I wouldn't miss a chance. I don't, I don't see a reason to change it, but maybe I'm missing.
I do.
I.
I'll let them say it.
Actually, I, I, I don't see a reason to change. The only thing that I will say is that you keep on moving these date further and further. There is a potential for more and more people to be registered. And so therefore, if there was a concern for the CBA at fifty mile, well, perhaps now it's seventy nine or eighty nine. So that's the one thing I would say I believe if I mean correctly.
I believe that there are not going to be anywhere near, nearly close to fifty. Because can we roll that back up to the, the privates? So it has to, any STRUs has to comply with all requirements of the ordinance, including special off street parking requirements. So this implies that all those two. You know, I think if we look at those fifty five units, we probably will see ten that have enough parking. So, so there are only ten that are eligible to apply for a special permit. And that's my, that's my topic of interest, but certainly not fifty five units of the original.
Is there still a high street special permit or the, the CBA is? Does they take that out?
They have it out right now.
There, that's the council has left it in there. That's the, she still has the high street.
I was picturing it was having a similar.
Take it out and then add it back in.
Okay. So I was thinking the process, they've capped the process for that. So this would be a simple process.
Yeah, I'm not trying to create special permit. If they just apply for a license, you know, the criteria, why would they have to give? It's because they're on our, and you say specifically that there will be no new ones allowed. I would like to add that in. It's already in there. It's already in there.
It's, yeah.
So why do they, why do we need to overboard this CBA or the special permit?
You would by effect, uh, have to apply for a parking prior because well, parking has to be addressed by zoning, the license award requires them to have.
Well, I mean, they do the whole, they have to do the entire application process.
No, sorry.
And then through licensing and. What's the point of special permit?
I'm thinking about documenting the fact that a. Absentee on short term is legal. So if you don't have a special permit, it's going to be, have to some process by which you say that this has been. That this has been allowed. It has to be, maybe it's a special zoning compliance permit that the zoning administrator issues for it. If you don't want to have a residence, the only purpose of a special permit. In addition to having some type of discretionary, is to allow residents and neighbors to weigh in. The purpose of not having a special permit is to exclude residents from being. Um, so if you don't want to have that public hearing process, then you have to substitute. Something else for the special permit in order to have something in the books that says an absentee on short term.
I go for a zoning administrator certificate. So I want to say we'll see. Any of this stuff.
I've been still concerned about this and I, I'm concerned that, that we're. We're not talking specifically about the number of units that, that. Potentially applied to. When we talked about this in April, this was ten or fifteen units made.
Did you think up a little bit and can't, can't hear?
When we heard in the last meeting was it could be as many as fifty. I, I just, I'm, I'm not comfortable with this at all, not, not understanding how many units applies to and, and what the impacts. I just think we're, we're, we keep backing off on what was a very, uh, very well put together zoning amendment last fall. We, we keep backing away from that with, with amnesty provisions, with softening parking provisions. And I just, I don't understand all of this. And, and you're, you're now granting, you know, permission for units to continue to operate. You don't know how many units there are. Uh, granting permission for them to continue. I, I just don't know why we.
Well. Yeah, I mean, we do know because the, the number that we were given by Jennifer.
What's the number?
That was fifty nine out of eighty eight.
That's, that's.
At that point. It is, but to, to Rick's point, how many of them are actually going to meet the parking requirements and therefore get approved? Not a significant amount, if you will. But we won't know until we come forward. Well, we have the option for members to. Not agree. I mean, that's, we're never going to have, uh, consensus there on any of these points. So we can still leave. What we added here, we said five members supported the recommendation, two minority opinions, one member would permit them. Um, anywhere in the city and the other one said, and I believe this is yours, Bob. Uh, would propose it, um. If the number of such units is significantly above the estimate intended fifteen, so your position is still the same. So we're basically all the same other than the idea that we just, um. Remove the special permit proposal and go for a special zoning certificate by the zoning administrator. But to memorialize that this is an exception and it happens only for these.
And actually, that, that raises another question for me. We'll, we'll answer this question. But if it were the zoning administrators, zoning compliance. Would that be able to restrict it to the current owner? I, I almost think the only way to restrict it to the current owner is through a special. I don't know how you could do that, could, could. Could prohibit a change in one of them unless it's covered by a special.
I think it's preferable and certainly more defensive on its, uh, more consistent with the way that I've seen things in the past. It's, that's my requirement. However, I do think, yeah, the better it can be here. Uh, but I do think it might be possible to, with the ordinance, make that, um, a condition that it's only for the, the currently. You know, the current owner and operator to be able to be eligible for that. But after that, the ordinance itself restricting its passage to the next party. Uh, I do think that's feasible, however, to your point, I more persistently stand using, I think, if you could say. Preferable to restrict it by way of the boards, uh, friend, this was a permit and condition, you know, or explicitly, but I don't consider that with. Ministry of Ordinance having that same, uh, substance that is.
So maybe what I'd suggest in that, in that regard is to say to, to create a zoning certificate, zoning compliance certificate. If that will achieve the results that we're, that we're asking for. And if we're advised by the council, we can't do that, then the problem to go to this.
Just curious about one aspect was. Mentioned that, that one criteria for approval of, of one of these units might be that they meet the parking requirement. And haven't we also had discussions that, that parking as it exists right now is, is grand problem. And if a residence doesn't meet the parking requirements, um, if they could be, the parking would be grand problem.
Just.
Primary residence, but not the, the, whatever we agree on the parking.
So if it's a single family residence, then this be. Really as, as a non owner occupied.
They have all street.
What's the parking?
Permit is for any single family.
What if they don't have any?
Two, one point five or two, whatever, two.
How is that, how is that property different from an owner of, uh, short term that, that doesn't have any?
That's a problem.
It's a problem.
Parking requirement.
It's the same, same regulation.
That you can watch since. That's why we create.
There's no, there's no additional parking requirement for single family short term. Right.
That's the home, home share because technically we.
Additional parking requirement. And that house doesn't have any. No additional parking requirement.
And there's no given.
Home share.
There's no just one pack.
Right, sure.
It's the same as if somebody lived there full time.
I'm talking about, if, if you go to the definition.
Sorry. Sorry, I was, yeah. It's sorry, where, where was?
Parking or what?
I want to get to the three definitions, so.
Oh, sorry, it's the itself.
Are we talking about investor?
We're sharing, sharing. So you said nothing.
Trying, I'm trying to compare the, uh, home share. If I have a home share. My primary residence. And I currently don't have any off street parking. There's no parking, that, that's still.
And you go away.
Still allow.
You go away and rent it to somebody else while you're away. So your cars move away, somebody else's cars.
Yeah. So now we're saying. I've got a piece of property and not the owner occupied. It's a single family house and it has no.
That's not a home share. That's, that's.
And it's the same.
Same way as a home share.
So basically it's same.
Ask it is what's the parking requirement?
Parking requirement, if you have no parking. If you were investor owner, rented it out for somebody on your lease, that person that wrote will park in the street. If you rent it out as a short term rental, that person parks in the street.
Because you would be, what Bonnie said, that a lot of these places won't be approved because they don't meet the parking requirement. I think they will meet the parking requirement because they don't currently have off street parking and we're not asking. That's what Rick just said. So a lot of those fifty-nine units wouldn't be approved if it's just the way it's done.
But I think, I think that, well, that's how you, I guess, if you go back to that language in the, in the report, it doesn't say that those can be, can be dusted from, can be non-conforming. It says they have to meet the parking requirement, which is different than the non-conforming. So I, I think that's saying we have to meet the parking requirement. Maybe we need to be more precise.
Well, because if it's comparable to a home share, as Heather was saying, then all of those would be, would be destined for parking.
I just, I really disagree with that. I think that, I think there's a it's a separate use. What we're doing here, what we're doing is to create a separate use, which is not a home occupied, homemade. An owner occupied is a new use, which is, which is an investor.
We need to define.
Yeah, and so, so it has to comply with all the.
Then if it's a single family home, you have to define parking requirement or otherwise.
For the parking requirement, parking requirement is defined in the ordinance, two spaces per unit.
That makes sense.
Okay.
What, what, what you just said a few minutes ago, it's a lot of these fifty-nine units won't be approved because they don't meet the parking. And we better define that.
Well, as it says, it's two spaces per unit. So we just need to clarify, not define, clarify.
If I could, and one of the points of debate with the council act was whether or not to require books to, to, or a lot of the ground, all of the spaces that apply to the residential that's there, the baseline residential that's there. So maybe you could be explicit here before it as to, but I think that's something that should happen here.
I think we're doing this. Now you're saying some of these units have to comply with zoning, parking requirement, which are the ones we're talking about right now, and, and others, following other categories, define a separate requirement. It's kind of overly complicated.
That's the problem with investors.
Zoning determines the parking for all short term.
Well, I, okay.
Which is where we started on this.
I understood, I, I, I'd forgotten where we started because it's been so long. I have always thought that an owner occupied unit didn't lose its destiny simply by being an owner occupied unit. And it has to, so, so if you have a, a limited share unit, for example, let's, let's take the home share. Home share unit, you live in a house, you're required to have two spaces. If you don't have those two spaces, you're legally, you're okay because you're legally non-conforming. And you don't lose the ability, you know, you can switch that out for a month, somebody coming to stay in your house for a month. Now, limited share, so that's, that's, that's where I see the no impact of parking. In a limited share unit where you're renting out rooms in your house, if you have no, if you have no parking spaces and you want to rent out a room in your house, I think what we said was you don't have to provide three parking spaces for that one. You only have to provide one parking space for that one. So you are required to provide additional parking spaces for the short term unit, where you're not required also to remedy all of your own. The same thing with owner adjacent. Owner adjacent, I just can't see that, that being an issue because. But I think the investor, who, the absentee, is a different, is a different beast. And that's where you say, okay, you can't do that on a short term basis unless you're compliant.
So you're saying that there wouldn't be investor owned short limited share?
It can't be.
No, they have to, they have to the whole unit.
The limited share has to be occupied by a room.
Share. I'm still trying to understand. I've got two single family houses. Both, both are occasionally short term. One is owner occupied, and what you're saying is there's no real parking requirement for that if they don't have.
If the dude has a home share.
The other, if he's in. The other is not owner occupied and they do have. So if, if that's what we're saying, I think you have to make that very clear because that's the criteria by which those fifty-nine units are the new units. And, and maybe there are only ten of them. The way this is written right now, there, there is no parking requirement. This is the same as, as a home share.
I, I really completely disagree with you because I think saying it has to comply with all requirements of the ordinance, including off street requirement, parking requirement, means it has to comply with all the.
And then you go to the off street park?
No, no, we're talking.
You don't have, you don't.
No, that's not in the parking requirement. That's not in the parking requirement. So I, I would be happy to add to that phrase, just to make you happy. Saying something must comply with all requirements of the ordinance, including the off street requirement, parking requirement, with no provision for testing of market performance. That would take care of, just clarifies.
What is the justification for treating that differently than a home share? Because you, so we say that these people can't rely on their, you know, grandfather off, off street parking. Then they have to sell their house because they can't use it as a short term rental or they use it as a long term rental.
Right.
There's two parts part there anyways. So I mean, to the extent that we're concerned that the short term rental units are locking up the streets, it's.
I think, right, from my point of view, I think the issue is trying to, trying to, trying to limit the amount of long-term housing that is lost tied up in short term rentals.
Which gets to my, which gets to my other point, which is I think it should be limited to one per investor owned property. They were talking in the city council about three, and I think it should just be one because everybody else on the other categories are all allowed one. Why should we allow them anymore? Get into a business in the, in the neighborhood to, to quote one of our members, this is kind of commercial operation for these people. And as you say that, they can turn them into long term rentals. We're not taking away income. Maybe we're taking away, you know, over the top income. But they can still, they're not left with a dead property. They can rent it tomorrow as a long term rental, or they can sell it for stads of money and get out of it. But, you know, it's not like we're hurting them. And so this idea of allowing under certain circumstances an investor owned property is sort of bending to the, to the comments that we heard that people, you know, deserve some consideration if they have a property or more, but in this case, a property that they would like to use as an investor for a term rental.
And I also do think there is a need for short term rentals.
Oh, yeah, we're not throwing that out. It's just this investor one is the complicating factor because those of us who live around them know that it's a big difference in having an owner in the house and not having an owner in the house.
It's a huge.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, to me, all of this lies to the base of, of the goals that this, that were stated at the beginning. And why this started with only for the occupied units because it obligates that owner to sign a commercial. If you're at a distance and, and you're renting another property in another part of the city, that ownership goes away. It's a completely different.
There are a couple of other things within the Salem ordinance I thought was worth considering. For an investor property, they must petition for a license or a special permit or whatever you decide they're going to, whichever of the two of those they're going to go for. Within sixty days of the date of the passage of the ordinance, I'm going to just add that in because that puts a stopper on it. Even though they have to have been registered by the date of new advertisement, they can't wait forever and just operate the way they've been operating. They need to apply the assistance to those of the ordinance they've accepted. I'm going to add that in there. And let's go back to special. I'm going to make the special, I'm the only one arguing for it. I don't, I'm not going to die for it, and it does make sense to have a special permit with the oversight and the memorialization. Record. So they have to apply for the special permit within sixty days of acceptance of the ordinance. Well, these people can apply or is it based upon, yes, that's in the model, included in, sorry, in the ordinance itself. This is friends. No, this is investor. It's not called that at all. But I'm not using that as the investment. It's the, that's been used by the council, but we're not using that word. Because it, it is, it is, but I mean, it's with all these criteria, they can't just walk in and get a permit. That's what I think honestly lies. But all the people have to apply within sixty days, not just these investors. I don't know anything about that. I'll ask.
Because your limitation timeframe. For those, but anybody else could open up one, whatever.
We exist, they've been forming, that they ought to follow within sixty days. We're not talking about, there, there's a limited number of us who support that idea. Of existing short term, other types of short term renters. I know you support that with a lot of the stuff. Oh, no, no, yeah, my question is just, is everybody, like, all of those who, who, they go home to all of those, will they all be notified for that same sixty day or is it just these? That's, that's a question. All of them will be notified that there's a new ordinance in place and you are operating in violation of it unless you apply for within a certain timeframe, or maybe, and the timeframe only affects the investor once.
It will have to be some kind of.
Well, you're, you're in violation if you don't get a license. A license, it has to be within sixty days if you're currently existing.
Or some, thirty-six months, we could say. I think, I think we were talking about like what was at this point, summers allowance.
Yeah, yeah. Rather than chasing that, I think they, they all have a certain number of days.
The problem is notification, that's if there's ones that aren't registered with the state.
Well, if they're in their violation. I'm just saying those who really want to apply. Okay, so this is the deadline to apply for all other types other than investor. I think so. What do we think it is? Because the person writing this up is not going to know what it is.
Well, whereas there's just a timeframe where the city will start enforcement, like a expectation rather than, I mean, if they don't apply within sixty days, then perhaps, then they should apply.
Yeah, so you're saying enforcement date, which was originally January of next year. If you're not in compliance, I mean, if you don't have a license, you're.
So then that's kind of when they should apply.
Take care of it. But I think we're putting a deadline on the investor properties because they're a special.
And if they don't do it, then they're out of luck.
Right, then they're out of, so I think that works. Just letting enforcement take care of the rest of the thing. All right, Salem also said. I looked at the names for it in Quincy, but they did not have any specific Salem, Salem's example, which we quoted, thanks to U V A. The numbers of, numbers of members who have supported this were different numbers now because more people participate. I don't think you want to do that. So represents, we can leave it the way it is. It just represents the difference of opinion, number four.
I think that's indicative enough.
Yeah, it's indicative enough. It's good. The only other question was around the parking. Because the new ordinance recommends just one parking space per unit for a for all of them. A limited share and for, here it is.
It's one, one per bedroom, all of them.
Per bedroom. Is it that restrictive? Because if the council goes with that, they'll wipe them all out tomorrow. Yeah. All right, let me read it. This is, this is the right version, five, two. Where the existing residential use is legally non-conforming, so this is the first one we're talking about. As to the off street parking requirement of this ordinance, such non-conformity may be maintained and only additional parking spaces required for the unit, the guest bedrooms, need be provided. In such instances, no special permit for non-conformities shall be required for the alteration of parking account. Within the Plum Island, Overlake District. Yeah, it's okay. All required parking for street use shall be located off street and onsite, except that off street, on street is allowed in the downtown Overlake District. An owner adjacent rental unit shall have one additional parking space for the street use, regardless of the number of guest bedrooms. And in addition to any parking required for the underlying use, including any legally pre-existing parking that I'm forming. So owner adjacent rental use requires only one additional parking.
On top of the two, so, so, so for you, the joint requirement is for, for parking spaces. Two for the primary use, two for the short term rental, owner adjacent use. And then one addition, it's actually five. If it were, if it were not a short term, then it would require four parking spaces, but because it's a short term, it requires one additional.
So adjacent units?
Owner adjacent units is the second housing.
Okay, and if it weren't a short term rental?
It would require two for the primary residence, two for the second, second residence.
I know it works.
If there were two houses. It's two for you.
It's a two family house, right?
Four, or two houses.
So you mean, so that's fine.
But, but if it's, but if there's a, you know, to box one, if those two, that duplex has no onsite parking, then there's only one parking space required for the short term because they're grandfather destined for the four. Now, when you think about it, if, if you, if you had space for a parking space when you're beside your house, I think typically use that parking space. So I don't, I just don't see that situation coming up. If they have room to put a parking space for the short term rental, why wouldn't they already be using a parking space for private?
Right, and do you, like, if you don't have a driveway, then create one? Grant up to, like, the two off street parking, do you then, are you still maintaining the grandfathering for those two spaces? And then just add the non-tenant or driveway?
Yeah, that's a pretty, that's pretty. And again, I think it goes a little bit to how, how explicit they are on the ordinance, some of the usual situations.
Well, this one is up for discussion with the council. We should point that out, right?
And it's worth mentioning that the report.
Well, I hope there's no one coming up because although they're meeting, they can explain it. The onsite parking and that's what happens. So that's an allocation. Yeah, what happens to?
The new use.
Yeah, that's it. Well, maybe that's what they'll do. That will be a good way to identify it. Say this is for the fifth parking space. And now, and the off street parking goes to the unit. That's, I know it does. What happens to the rest of it?
One more, two, two more of this on your. We talked about this one point. Whenever this ties into the, I call them, it's tight enough that it's Whenever this guy's, it's gonna be, I quote, then it's tight enough, then it's, when tested in, if, if it's too tight, step back and, and loosen some of the standing. But if this becomes a loose guideline to begin with, then everybody just turns on it and, and then it's very hard to get tighter. So I, I just wanna keep raising my hand relative to that, because we talked about this. When we step back from where we were last fall on some of these points, we, we are opening this up to the potential for people getting on the list of situations that may be here from now on.
Yeah, so it's good that the parking is as tight as it is in this draft. So what we were just talking about and what everyone's brought up is the council's need to rethink what it means for owner-adjacent parking for the vested part of it and the community party as a result of wanting to have a short-term rental there. For a home share rental unit, no additional parking, talk about that. A limited share shall have one additional parking space per guest rent. So that's tight. That's good, because you can loosen it, like you said, but you can't. I don't necessarily, to loosen that to through. So a limited rental unit shall have, limited share shall have one additional parking space per guest bedroom in addition to any parking required for the underlying, including any legally pre-existing parking non-conforming. So that's, I think, better in there. Either wipe out a lot of potential ones, or it gets questioned enough that they have to revisit it. But they'll have, they, the council will have more concrete experience by that point.
So I, so I have a question or just comment. Irrespective of what the Zodiac ordinance says, as I read what we proposed for the parking, I'm not sure I see any genes in my recommendation. Okay, I'm sure I'm saying that.
I don't think there are. It's just around the vesting and the question about parking for adjacent units. That's all that has to be adjusted.
I would, I would.
That's not on the.
Not using.
Yeah, I.
Um, I would wonder whether we want to, like in our previous discussion, whether under number one, we want to say that this does not apply, if, if there is a a special permit or something for a best of, short-term running, this is not applied. You want to say that? That the vesting, this, this, uh, continuation of vesting does not apply to the best of. Because we had that discussion back.
So vesting does not apply.
Best of.
I'm going, just this weekend. Just the time you need to sign that out of the document, just so you have to do that. I, I made that a, that, that plan six months ago, six weeks ago, knowing that you have to sign.
You just.
Yeah, right. Okay, so we'll work on revising this, sending it to the council, because we've got a deadline of twenty-one days or something. But we're within.
Yeah, they're looking to have, obviously, their, um, money developed, maybe to take it.
There is a meeting Monday night, because I'm, I'm gonna reappoint. Um, I don't know if this is on the agenda.
Totally, the chair is expecting to cover that.
Could have done that one yet.
So if we have a little bit of time, Bonnie, it's your plan to make these changes, perhaps certainly to everybody, to ensure that.
Over there and just.
Or, or like, yeah, or if it's stuff seven-zero, it's nine-zero or, or.
Yeah, I want eyes on every aspect of it.
Okay.
You buy email with direct comment back to me. Let's, we takes us over, but.
So this, this all just applies to our recommendations to them.
It's, it's just regular things.
My, my, my concern was when they, when, when they did the, when we had the joint session and stuff, and they were cutting things out of the, the, the ordinance, and so they were saying, oh, dupe aided by the licensing. So I, I was questioning whether we should remove all that, because my thought was, uh, by removing some of that, are we handing the notice to the public of the requirements? If it's only in the zone, if it's only in the licensing, they look at the zoning and say, okay, I'm gonna go, but oh, I got.
No, they get, they have to pass both.
Yeah, but when they look at that first, my thought was, do we leave it in there just for notice purposes?
Well, if it's more zoning, if it's more licensed, if it's not strictly zoning, I mean, Rick's been very good about this. It just doesn't sit within a zoning ordinance. It's gotta come out. So all some of the licensing, that still has to go through, and they're gonna have to reconcile the tool to make sure that nothing falls through cracks. This is just our recommendation. So as amended, I'll take a motion to, um, send our recommendations report to the city council. Second?
Austin.
Don?
No, I think that was.
Oh, Heather, okay. And all those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Okay, so that'll, that'll, that'll be said.
Don's gonna disappear because he's not going to bed tonight. He's actually going to the airport first.
Not getting a week to see that.
Have a great vacation. We're gonna, we're not gonna see you the end of the month?
Yeah, I'm not here in, I'm, I'm around in two weeks, so I'll, I'll miss the next twenty-four meetings.
Okay, and we're not, this is a precursor to what I'm gonna announce. We're not meeting on August third. We're not having a meeting the first week of August.
August.
See, have a great time. Oh, it's the one meeting. We're just gonna have the one meeting on the end of August, so I think we deserve to tonight. Everything we've been through, I wish I could give you all the next meeting, but I can't. We've got too much, it's not too much, but we've got enough stuff back up. All right, there was a letter, a letter about public access from Jean Postello, Andy has handed it offline with her. It was more of the same of what we talked about tonight, the technology, but it, it included why we can't even see council chambers, because we basically don't have access to it anymore. And that's the best we can write in on the technology. So we're stuck with this space. Uh, we only have minutes that people had time to review for, um, the eighteenth, to have a motion to approve those minutes. Yeah, second?
Second.
Alden? They were liberated, other not, not substantive edits, so. That's best, anyone else does, that's the one. All right, all those in favor? Any opposed? Um. I was gonna, I'm keeping, you don't see anything else on here about Waterhouse West. Um, and that's because we're using it as part of the updates, and I know Jamie's been working on some stuff, but I'm not gonna actually show us any of that now. We've been talking formally, so I'll make it a formal request. We want to put together a committee to work more specifically on design scenarios and. And something. Take it beyond words, put it on paper, or put it into a word specifics in the block model. See what it would look like. Where are we on that?
So, uh, we're, we had a, we can't include. Bob and I agreed, you know, this committee to forget zoning, and the idea would be to meet three times between now and August sixteenth. And once I have no rule like to be in the committee, I will do a drill poll, find three nights, I think, since we're not meeting on the third as planning board, that actually opens that up as one of the potential nights for us to meet. So if, if anybody is interested in actually doing some serious sprinting on zoning for the next six weeks.
Raise your hand.
I know that it's a busy time, a lot of people can't commit to digging around for, for all three reasons, but I think you do need that system consistently. So anybody would like to participate? Is that Jamie and you can onset? So it's you.
What's the idea?
Uh, it would be by, we would like to have a report to the board on August seventeenth.
So I'm gone. But.
We could.
Otherwise, I could. I will be.
Sure, too, but just a first working session on August third, for anybody who wants to attend it. I know it's because I'm pushing this because I get the sense from the mayor's committee that they will move ahead with N E D on broad stroke positions on the term sheet that we are considering to get N E D's reaction to it. And I'm just afraid they're gonna get too far down the road with N E D for us to be able to propose specifics that the zoning requires.
Well, I think, I think we could, I certainly would want to have a first meeting within the next two weeks. So August third could be our second.
Right, just do two meetings, but I don't see what you come up with. Do you do this preliminary work, where you're going with it, what you're seeing? I could also go back to that committee and say, this is the work we're doing so far. We need some of your consulting money to do the more precise design work that none of us has the time or possibly the expertise to do. Um, so I can show them some progress. So those are the two motivations, and then sharing something that you do for possibly ties to some things you don't want to, trying to, you know, to get some more money to.
So we won't, we won't be meeting the board, if you're saying we have, have something, the second meeting will be the third.
Yeah.
Right, I think certainly, I was, I was sort of seeing the third is absolutely the stage of the second meeting. So I was, I was looking for the first meeting between the eleventh and the nineteenth, and the second meeting between the twenty-fifth and the third. So. I certainly think that, or the second. It's gonna depend on who's available which nights. So if you'd be interested in participating.
Yeah.
Have a couple of meetings between now and the third.
Sure. So I'm aware of some.
But let me just do a, a quick. And it can't be more than, we can't be five.
Yeah, we have four, and it's gonna be a public meeting. It'll be posted. We only need forty-eight hours' notice. Check it in the office, probably work in the mayor's conference room or some other small space.
So.
No, it's all in person.
Okay, so people can show up.
People can show up and something posted.
But we don't have to.
Yeah, and, and, and Rick's the chair, so, you know, if you guys decide, just having a working session, you don't want any input from the public, you just go to work and let them watch. But I have this experience from something like twenty years ago, when we did a strategic land use plan. It was two thousand and four, nineteen. Oh, eighteen has a whole lot better than twenty. But we worked in a room, I mean, there must have been channeled us on that today. And there would be as many, you know, as fifteen people sitting watching us. Once a lot of charming, we were glad to charm them, but we just went on about our business. That's the way it's supposed to be, right? It's a public body and it's open meeting law. And everything that was discussed there in terms of the head substance was brought back to planning board, which is what that should have to do in any way, so there's nothing in about this.
So you're, you're searching for seventeen, for sure, it's. Okay, I will send a, oh. We'll try, I'm gonna give a whole bunch of dates and, and. Do it earlier.
Sure, so I would change that.
Are you sure? What is that?
Like I can see I have a six P M showing.
I got you.
Three at four, you know.
Oh. Yeah. I'll send out a bunch of.
Yeah. Dates suggested. So we, we have the ability to print, so, so. Uh, we can only print a lot of my sons' house. We can send some things to the printer, but depending on how much you're setting over there, we may not have a bunch of. So, uh, unfortunately, we don't have a great large budget department, so, um, so we send things to a printer. So if you can be specific, if you can live in the home, but it's gonna be your first probably possible.
I get John.
Right.
Let's have a good printer.
Any other?
That's all right, that's all. I'll send them, next couple of days, I'll send them.
Andy, any other updates?
I know that's something.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
The.
Alden, uh, second? Beth, all those in favor?
Hi.
And Sean. Thank you.